Welcome, everybody, to the June 7th regular Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, we will conduct a, we'll call the meeting to order first and foremost, sorry, and then we'll conduct a moment of silence, and it looks like we have a few today, and so I'm going to invite Kutchin Thomas up to give his moment of silence, and then Tina, Board of Supervisors, Vice Chair Tina Scott, will give one as well. So come on up, Mr. Thomas.
Morning, everybody. So I could take this time to give a moment of silence for Ms. Amy Walker Allen, who had passed away due to a car accident a week ago. So I would like to take this time. She was a beautiful person. She was a friend, a daughter, granddaughter, cousin, and niece. So I'd like to take that moment of silence for her, too, as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, and Ms. Vice Chair Scott.
A beloved member of our community, past Tara St. John. She was a member of the Lake County Arts Council. She was a programmer for KPFC. She was a marriage and family counselor. She was active in many roles in our community. She will be dearly missed. She is also the creator of the peace poles that are in the city of Lakeport and the city of Clear Lake. So if we could hold a moment of silence for her.
Supervisor Sabatier, can you lead us in the pledge?
Ready? Begin.
Pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Did we still have that potential item yet? Director DeLeon.
Good morning. Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director. This morning, what I'd like to do is request your board's consideration of an extra agenda item, and if approved, I'd like to request that you take it up at a later time today. There's a little minor modification I need to make to the resolution, but I'd like to offer the justification for your consideration for this extra agenda item. This is in regards to our Soda Bay Corridor Evacuation Route Planning Grant. We were notified on Friday that the deadline for getting all of the paperwork in for our application and to receive the grant is this Friday, the 10th, and prior to Friday, we had been advised that the deadline was going to be the 17th. So they've moved it up a week. I had everything kind of set up for your board for next Tuesday with this resolution, and so we need to have that resolution done as part of our final application paperwork. And obviously, this is the last opportunity to get this before your board, before it's due. So that should address the need to take this up because we received the notice late Friday afternoon, and it was well after the agenda for today had been posted. The need to take immediate action on this should be fairly obvious. If we don't have the resolution that authorizes the CAO to sign the agreement, then our paperwork is incomplete, and we risk losing the grant. So it's a simple resolution and should not be controversial at all. So that's my justification for taking it up as an extra. And again, respectfully request, if you agree with that, that we take it up a little bit later today, give me an opportunity to make a minor adjustment to the resolution.
All right. With that, should I open up the public input, or are we, is there anyone in the public that has any comments on bringing this consideration of this item? And my, mine just went off, so I don't know if yours did, but...
No hands.
No hands. So I'll bring it back to the board for...
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve this extra item.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. All right, motion carries. So we will take that up 4.1 later and...
I'll be ready.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right. Next is item five, our consent agenda. Commonly, we will vote one time on multiple items that are non-controversial. However, if there is someone that has concerns and would like to pull an item on the agenda, they can do so. So I will open it up for anyone that would like to pull any items. And so Supervisor Sabatier?
Yes, I'd like to pull. Thank you. I'd like to pull item 5.6 for further discussion.
Item 5.6. Okay. Is there anyone from the public? All right. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.5 and 5.7 to 5.20.
Second.
So I have a motion to end a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, and motion carries. Next is our 9:05, Lake County Animal Care and Control Pet of the Week. And we'll, what surprise do we have today?
If some of you guys would like to come down and help, I greatly appreciate that.
(laughing)
Oh, my goodness. Kitty!
Oh, there's kitty.
(laughing)
There's more. Come on, buddy. You gonna hide in there? Kitty, kitty?
(laughing)
Hello, my name is Mary Pashke. I work with Lake County Animal Care and Control. We're located at 4949 Hellbush Drive. Today, I brought with me four of our adoptable kittens. These guys are, I want to say, just under four months of age. They are ready to be adopted out today, actually. They're already fixed, paid, and neutered. Come on, buddy. You don't want to, all right, there we go. Don't want to drop you. These ones are very playful. They had a very quiet car ride here, so they're getting kind of sleepy, and they're pretty entertaining to watch them play in the kennels. They, you can adopt them out singles or together. If you adopt them out together, they play with each other and keep themselves entertained. But we do have other ones that are ready for adoption. If you guys do have any other questions in regards to who we have for, ready to adopt out, feel free to contact us at 707-263-0278. We do also have some adult cats available as well, so it's not just kittens. We do have some black cats. We do have some, obviously, you see, we have some of the orange kittens. Some, (laughing) we have a bunch of different colors. Do you want to grab this one real quick?
(laughing)
So we have a wide variety of kittens, so it's not just what we got currently. But does anybody have any questions of what, in regards to what we got right now?
Where are we?
No.
Um, I am not entirely sure off the top of my head. I know most of the ones we have currently are owner surrender. We don't accept just stray kittens. We only accept sick or injured or owner surrenders. Anything else?
He is not.
Is he trying to dig through that wall to escape?
(laughing) Well, thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
I think you found a new friend.
I enjoy kittens, and then they get older, and they never pay attention to me.
They've never paid attention to you.
Then they're just like, until they're hungry.
This is literally the definition of herding cats.
And this was not the entire letter.
Oh, wow.
Next time, our letter has already been adopted out.
Yeah?
I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. With that, we'll move on to our 6.2, public input. It looks like we have Mr. Greg Biancini. Sir, if you'd like to come up, you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Greg Biancini. I live on 13th Avenue in Lucerne, and my concerns today is with the needle exchange program that's happening on our streets. And I turned in my citizen's input request form, so that's everything I'd like to go over right there.
Do you want to read it?
Well, okay. So with this needle exchange program, I can't get any information from, from Anita. I think that's her street name.
Why don't you read this? I think this is the points you want to make. So if you want to read that, the points that you put on the back.
Did you guys get a chance to look this over?
We just received it, so if you, if you just read it and then submit it, I can have copies made.
Okay, cool, 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 cool. So I'd like to see the annual report, 1, 2, 1, 3, 4, 9-1, and then the permission to operate in city limits in Lucerne on 13th Street. I'd like to see, does she have permission on that? And then public report, the requirements, again, 1, 2, 1, 3, 4, 9-1, and then what drug supplies are being passed out? Is she still passing out the smoking kits? I want, I'd like to know. What is she, what is she passing out? And then the restrictions, the regulations, the guidelines, requirements, public records, and authorization, and then the city codes for setup, for being set up in the street on 13th Avenue. So there's quite a bit here I'd like to have, and we are going to be having a town meeting on Thursday in Lucerne, so I need to have this stuff. So, yeah, I need, I need some information about this needle exchange program because it's getting, it's just like, it's getting a little out of hand. I didn't come last week because I was afraid to come here, because when I came here two weeks ago, it was on 5/24/22. That was a Tuesday. I showed up here. Well, what happened was, I guess she found out I was here. Well, she's, and then after she got done setting up her little truck program, my dogs are all barking. I go outside. She's parked out in front of my house. She's parked in front of my house, waving something, doing something, threatening me and my family.
You can come.
Then she did it again. So I didn't come because I was afraid to come here. What is she going to do to me and my family? Then she did it again, even without, she came last week, too. This time, she didn't stop. She just kept driving by. So anyways, I just want to let you guys know what's going on, and we need some help. Could she just go to a safe spot, a safer spot, like at the beginning of town where the Lucerne signs?
Greg, your three minutes is up, but we have that. I'll give...
Yeah, yeah.
And I believe this is going to be coming to the board in the next month. I actually did my own research and spent an evening down there with her on Tuesday, so I have a lot to say about the needle exchange and the great work that she's doing.
Can I come to that?
Yeah, when it comes here, it would be great, yeah.
Yeah.
And when is that going to be?
We don't know exactly yet, but when it does, that's when definitely it would be good for you to come and talk about your experience, because hers experience is obviously different.
Okay.
So.
And, you know, I don't disagree with this program at all. It's a good program. It's just where she's doing it and how she's doing it. It just needs to be safe. So I just wanted that to be clear.
Thanks, Greg.
I totally get the program. It's good. We need it. So thank you, guys, for listening to me this morning.
Thank you, Greg. It is on the agenda for Lucerne Town Hall as well, so when you guys can discuss it there as well. So, all right. Joan Moss, if you're here. No? Doesn't, is there anybody else in the chambers that has public input? Ma'am? Yes, I don't know if you've got one of these documents. Did you need one? Okay.
My name is Roberta Wright. I also live on 13th Avenue, and me and several of the other neighbors are very concerned about her manner. When we try and approach her and talk to her, she's hostile with any of the neighbors that have any questions. And I heard that you're saying that it's a great program. I don't disagree with the program. We just all disagree with where it's located. It's in the middle of the street. It's not on the sidewalk. It's not inside a building. We have, my friend's grandchildren live on that street, and me and one of my neighbors, she's also here. We walk in the mornings frequently. We find needles on the ground that are old and dirty. Kids walk on those streets. It's right near the Tower Mart. The kids go down to get ice cream. It's not safe for them to do that anymore. It's, it's, it's not the program. It's where it's located. That's really an issue for all of us, and we've paid taxes on that street for years. And we got behavioral health already. We have too much there.
Can you fill out one of the documents for us, the citizen's input request? Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any public input? Ma'am?
Good morning. I'm Suzanne Alexander. I live on 14th Avenue, and I agree, there's needles. We find them, and my concern is just move the program to a non-residential area. You know, put it in, down by the Social Services Building in Lower Lake, move it to the Walmart parking lot, but not where people are walking every day. And like Roberta said, the power mark's right there. So there's kids riding their bikes. We find, we're finding needles. We have, he's got a bag of them. Roberta has one at home she just found the other day. So just move it to a non-residential neighborhood. It didn't, you know, it doesn't mean move it to Cobb or Middletown, just a non-residential neighborhood, okay? There's one other item for me, is that there's a big RV. It's dilapidated. There's a couple living in it. The tags are expired. On 14th Avenue, they've been there since July, and I called you about it, Mr. Crandall, and occasionally, the county comes and put "Do Not Occupy" stickers on it and all of that, and they just come out and take the stickers off their own trailer, you know, and then go on living there. Well, they finally put a "Do Not Occupy" 72-hour notice on it about a month ago, and they're 72 hours. After 12 days, they finally moved. Where did they move? 100 yards up the street. Now they're in front of my place. I've talked to the man twice. He says, "Yeah, we're moving it." I gave him some gasoline, and there they are. So I pay taxes, too, and I never am late on my taxes. I pay my full year's property taxes the end of October, the day I get the bill. But this year, I'm considering, should I even pay my property taxes? Because it's not only that one. There's another one that comes and parks down at the beginning of the street, and their tags have been dated 2012. So I don't know how these people even, where they came from. Can the county, like, buy an old campground and set them up somewhere? I mean, everybody has to live someplace. They're not allowed. They tend to keep their belongings close to their RV, but it's very unsightly, and I don't know how safe it is, you know, if there's drugs going on or not. Okay, that's my say.
Could you fill one of these documents out for us?
Will do.
Thank you very much. And then, is there anyone else that has any?
My name is Sherry Stanley. I, too, live in Lucerne on 13th Street, and I'm just here to voice my concerns of this program also. I've lived in Lucerne since 1991, and I've seen a lot of changes over the years, but the changes that are happening more recently since mental health has moved in are really declining the area. I have three grandchildren that come to visit, and I'm afraid for them to go out. I'm afraid for them to walk down to the store. They always want to go down to Tower Mart to get a little something, a little snack or something, and it's very concerning to me. And the people that are operating that program are very nonapproachable. We've tried several times just to talk with them, and they've been very hostile. As we drive by, they shake their hands at us, I mean, and make hand gestures at us. It's just not a good thing in that residential area. I realize that 13th Street is a commercial residential street, but we still, there is no businesses on that street other than the ones on the corner. We are residential family street. There's numerous homes on that street with children, and it's just very concerning to me the way that they conduct their business. I'm not against the program. I think it's a health and safety issue, but I don't believe that it needs to be there within our residence. And I will fill out my concern. Thank you so much for listening.
Is that 13th Avenue?
Yeah, in Lucerne.
Okay, just want to correct that.
Yeah.
It's been called both over the years, though.
Yeah, 13. Did she say street? Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, it's Avenue, yeah. Is there any other public input? Is there anybody in Zoom? I don't see anybody. All right. So we'll go ahead and close public input and come back to the board and move on to our 9:07 item, our 6.3, Presentation of Proclamation Designating the Month of June 2022 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. And Jessica Pyska, Supervisor Jessica Pyska will be reading this proclamation.
Board of Supervisors, County of Lake, State of California, Proclamation Designating the Month of June 2022 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Whereas our nation was founded on the principle of equal rights for all people, but the fulfillment of this promise has been long in coming for many Americans. Some of the most inspiring moments in our history have arisen from the various civil rights movements that have brought one group after another from the margins to the mainstream of American society. And whereas in the movement toward equal rights for lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender LGBTQ+ people, a historic turning point occurred on June 28, 1969, in New York City with the onset of the Stonewall Riots. During these riots, LGBTQ+ citizens rose up and resisted police harassment that arose out of discriminatory criminal laws that had since, that have since been declared unconstitutional. In the four decades since, civil rights for LGBTQ+ people have grown substantially, and LGBTQ+ pride celebrations have taken place around the country every June to commemorate the beginning of the Stonewall Riots. And whereas California has been a leader in advancing the civil rights of its LGBTQ+ citizens, and while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. And whereas LGBTQ+ residents in Lake County represent our families, our friends, our neighbors, our teachers, our employees, and our community leaders, across all religions, races, and communities, there are LGBTQ+ people helping our nation to become a more perfect union in reaching our ideals proclaimed in our Declaration of Independence that all people are created equal and therefore deserve to be embraced and treated as equals. Now, therefore be it proclaimed, the Board of Supervisors and the County of Lake does hereby proclaim June 2022 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Lake County and calls upon its residents to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and celebrate the diversity of our community, passed and adopted the 7th day of June 2022.
Thank you. I want to address particularly you wonderful people. I am a survivor of intolerance, bigotry, and harassment by policemen, as well as something called gay mashing, which was very popular when I was growing up. And this moment is a moment for all those people who were mistreated, thrown in jails for touching each other in a gay bar, and for those 48 people killed in Orlando. This is for them, not for me and Joy, as much as we appreciate what you have done. That rainbow flag flying above this courthouse is a hallmark for all humanity, for the oppressed, for, it has a meaning. It has a special meaning. It's a kind of triumph over the bigotry and intolerance that I was talking about, over the land of the free and the brave, and it took a great deal of bravery to survive. And I am approaching my 89th birthday in September, and I will always remember this special day, thanks to all you wonderful people out there. This is also, of course, a wonderful tribute, a thank you, gratitude, to the Lake County Courthouse. The citizens of Lake County symbolically stated in this flag and this day and this proclamation that they are a hate-free community, stated that we are and are committed to inclusive and diversity. And those of us belonging to the LGBT community care not, are not only empowered by this display of love and commitment, but we can only express our gratitude to our abiding faith in tears. Thank you all so very, very much. This is for all of those people who have died in this struggle, and you people have made a triumph, like I said, over bigotry and intolerance. Thank you so very, very much.
So I've had the pleasure of hosting KPFC's LGBTQ+ show with this man the last almost three years, and, and he's been there doing it for 13 now, 13 years he's been out in front. A man who was arrested unjustly just for being who he was. So it's a pleasure every day, every day I get to spend with you, Harold. You're amazing. I don't have to tell a board of natives and women and an immigrant that representation and visibility is important, and especially to the LGBTQ+ community, because when, when our government is going far right on the highest court in the land, and we're worried about our rights, and young people are seeing that we're still being treated as, as an unequal and, and people that aren't in, in, you know, deserving of the rights of our Constitution. It's important for our local It's important for our local governments, like you guys, to stand up and say that the LGBTQ+ community members in Lake County matter, that they're visible, and they intertwine in all our communities. No matter what community we're from, we have LGBTQ members in those communities. We, that's why the rainbow flag is so important, not just to our community, but to everyone. Because it's about pride. It's about love. It's about acceptance and justice. And it was 10 years ago this month that I got to do the first proclamation as the mayor of Clear Lake. And it's just, it's such an honor for me to stand in this courthouse that I've been coming to and lobbying this board for 20 years, for whatever, to have that flag up front and for you to do this again and continue to do this, I hope, to show that this county and its leadership is accepting and loving of their LGBTQ+ community. So thank you all so much.
I'll go down there for a photo. I think this would be appropriate for all of us to go down.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah.
Nice. Very good, thank you.
Just making sure I wouldn't steal it this time. Yes. And so it looks like we have Todd Metcalf. If you'd like to unmute. He is unmuted, go ahead.
Yeah, I am, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Todd Metcalf, Director of Lake County Behavioral Services. I just wanted to share, I am the co-chair of the County Behavioral Health Directors Association LGBTQ+ Committee. And needless to say, I'm in full support of this proclamation and the fact that we are recognizing and celebrating Pride Month. This is a very proud moment, so thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Anyone else online that? I don't see any hands. Is there anyone else that has any comments about this proclamation? All right, and so I'll bring it back to the board. And everybody's, anything else anybody would like to state? All right. With that, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you Supervisor Pyska for getting that done. We are on our 9:15, which is our 6.4, Hearing on Account and Proposed Assessment for 7137 East State Highway 20, Lucerne, California. And it looks like we have, yep, we have Director DeLeon on. I'll give the floor to you, sir.
Sure, thank you very much, board. I'm very pleased to introduce William Fox. He's one of our program coordinators with Water Resources. He's taken this program under his wing and has learned a lot and is really doing some great things here with our department and for our community. And I'm excited to introduce him. And he's going to introduce this item. And William, thank you very much, and we look forward to your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Here, give me a second just to share my screen.
Oh, we need to swear you in real quick, Mr. Fox. So Johanna, she's the, she conducts the swearing.
Okay, with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Does everybody see my screen properly?
Yes.
Okay. So, good morning. My name is William Fox, and I'd like to begin here just with an introduction. So I'm a Water Resources Program Coordinator within the department, and my responsibility is lake bed management within the department. And upon completion of an abatement, which happened on the subject property, a 7137 East State Highway 20, Lucerne, California, 95458, we are required to give an account and proposed assessment for the work that has been conducted, and if approved, will be reported as a lien against property. So here, I'll start off with the property description. So the owner on title is a Virgil and Audrey Skinner. On the property address, like I stated, is a 7137 East State Highway 20, Lucerne, California, 95458. APN 006-023-03. And it's owned a suburban reserve district, and it is an improved parcel with a lake bed structure. Now, on January 21, 2021, the property was found to be in violation of the Lake County Code and the Lake Bed Encroachment Lease. The lake bed improvement was in a dilapidated state consisting of broken or missing planks, pilings, and scattered debris. Pieces of the lake bed structure were actively falling into the lake. There are issues, these issues violate both the Lake County Code, Chapter 23, Shoreline Ordinance, Section 13.2, Maintenance, Repair, and Removal of Improvements, and also the Lake Bed Encroachment Lease, Section 13, Maintenance and Repair. These issues, because of these issues, a violation letter was sent to the property owner via certified mail, was signed, received on May 18, 2021, notifying the property owner to these issues and giving them time to rectify these issues. By September 28, 2021, no progress had been made to come into compliance. And as such, a notice of nuisance in order to abate was posted on the property and sent to the owner, again, certified mail. And we did receive a signed receipt back. So here's some pictures of the lake bed structure during our initial investigation. You can see there on the left, there's a lot of scattered debris coming from the structure. And then on the right, you can see some of the broken, missing pilings that are falling into the lake. Here are some more pictures of the structure exemplifying the dilapidated, unsafe condition. It was determined that the structure had the potential to impact safety, navigation, and water quality. And I would also like to state that it's a huge responsibility to own lakefront property. It abuts, lakefront property abuts quite possibly the biggest asset to the county, which is Clear Lake. It provides around 60% of the drinking water for our residents, endless recreation opportunities for our visitors and our residents. Harbors are listed species of fish, the Clear Lake Hitch, along with numerous populations of resident and migrating birds. And also is extremely culturally significant to our indigenous communities. So we did try and contact the property owner, like I stated, a Virgil and Audrey Skinner, multiple times via certified mail and posting on the subject property and received no reply over the nine-month period that these issues persisted until February, when the abatement was conducted. I would also like to note that the Lake Bed Encroachment Lease, which was signed by the property owner and by all property owners on Clear Lake, gives the right to the leaseor, which is the County of Lake, to go on the lease premises and all improvements for any purposes associated with the rules, regulations, and policies of lake bed management. A determination was made to move forward with the abatement due to the issues persisting on the property and the owner not be willing or able to move forward to contact the department and address the issues. So we requested an inspection and abatement warrant, which was issued by the County of Lake Superior Court Judge to allow our Class A licensed marine contractors to be on-site and abate the issues persisting. You can see here, abatement was started on February 23, 2022. Our contractor, Lake Marine Construction, responded to our RFQ 21-13, working to abate these issues by removing the existing structure, which was falling into the lake, and removing the broken failing pilings, which were potentially serving as a navigation hazard. Here you can see the before and after pictures. In both pictures, you can see the buoy in the left of the corner kind of noting that it's the same angle on both images there. And abatement was completed on February 25, 2022. So I'd like to end the presentation with our recommendation. On February 25, 2022, compliance with the notice of nuisance in order to abate was obtained. The abatement costs were $17,345. The administrative costs were $1,172.56. Staff is recommending, the Board of Supervisors confirmed the assessment of $18,517.56 and direct staff to report a notice of lien against the property. After recordation, it should be delivered to the county auditor. We shall enter the amount of the lien on the assessment rule as a special assessment. Again, the total amount the staff recommends the board prove is $18,517.56. And with that, that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Is there any questions or Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just global questions. I appreciate, and I remember we brought this up and signed a contract for $70,000 with Lake Construction to be able to, or Lake Marine Construction to be able to do this. So appreciate seeing the results happening. Curious about two things. One, is this completely isolated to Water Resources? Or is this in collaboration with code enforcement as well? And then my second question is, if the lien is paid, does this go back in a revolving fund to be able to continue to do cleanups on the lake? Or is that something that we just need to approve for in our budgets?
That is the goal, to make it a revolving fund. So once it does go there, I'll bring another item to start that revolving fund. That is the goal. We did receive an additional $250,000 to complete additional abatements through the California Natural Resource Agency. So those will be going on in the future.
Appreciate that. And then the former question of, is this in collaboration with code enforcement at all? Or is this simply in Water Resources?
So code enforcement really did help me tailor and structure this and gave me a lot of advice. I did try to follow their structure and how they did abatements. So I did kind of start this from start to finish, getting funding and the whole presentation. But the Code Enforcement Division, and especially Marcus, did help with the whole process. And Miss Anita Grant with the Legal Department did give a lot of advice as well. So I do, I would like to acknowledge their help as well.
All right, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Is there anyone in the public that has a comment for this? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action. And then if anybody wants to make the motion for me, I'm fine with that.
I just need to find out how much it is again.
Sorry.
He took it off the screen.
Let me see it again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the assessment for the property submitted to us for the total amount of $18,517.56. And the property is 7137 East State Highway 20 in Lucerne, California.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fox. It looks like the next one will be postponed to a further date?
Yes, Community Development has asked this item be continued to a later date.
Okay, excellent. All right.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Do I need to amend my motion to direct staff to record a notice? So I would like to negate my motion. Do I need to move to? Or can I add another motion on top of that?
Yes.
I'd like to move to direct staff to record a notice of special assessment lien against the property. Apologize for missing that.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. All right, so 6.5 is pulled for a later date. Let's see. Six, well, we're too soon, I think, for the 6.6. So we'll go on to the 7.2. Is, let's see, is Mr. Gearhart here? Director Gearhart? Or maybe we could see if he's online.
Is it necessary for him to be here for this?
Maybe not. Oh, yeah, because we're just appointing. Yeah, he's already, yeah, you're right. So we'll move on to our 7.2, sitting as the Lake County Air Quality Management District Board of Directors, consideration of appointment to the LCAQMD Hearing Board pursuant to Health and Safety Code. With that, it looks like we have, two applicants have been received for the Hearing Board vacancy, and the memo attached states who the person is. So the person is, let's see what we got. Robert Bridges. All right, so that's the person they would like, they recommend for us to appoint. Is there anybody from the board that has any questions on this? Anyone from the public? I'm not seeing anyone online either, so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Robert L. Bridges as a public member to the LCAQMD Hearing Board for a three-year term.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. All right. We will move on to our 7.3. Consideration of the following Advisory Board Appointments: West Region Town Hall, Middletown Cemetery Board, Lower Lake Cemetery Board. And so I think we will, we have two vacancies and two people, one vacancy and one person, and then a reappointment. So are there any questions or concerns about this? Anybody from the public before we take action? And I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Timothy Samuel Chiara, hopefully I said that correctly, and Julia Carrera to the Western Region Town Hall.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Zoe Priscisco to the Middletown Cemetery Board.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, I move to reappoint Iris Hudson to the Lower Lake Cemetery District.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. So we're done with 7.3. Let's see. Should I do 7.5?
Mr. Ewing is here.
Yep. So we'll move on to 7.5, which is a consideration of agreement between the County of Lake and SCS Field Services for Annual Landfill Gas Collection System Operations Monitoring, Maintenance, and Reporting Services. And so I'd like to see if, Mr. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director, if you're online, we'll give the floor to you.
We frozen up there? Looks like it.
I see him right here, yeah. Well, maybe he's tuned in and we'll... We can do calendars first.
Well, are we still online? Because it's frozen.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
It is frozen, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Well.
Take a break?
Let's take a five-minute break. Thank you.
Maybe that's why he wasn't responding.
Snap the picture.
Definitely would explain why he wasn't responding. I'm frozen on my Zoom.
Yeah, I'm frozen too.
Thank you, Sam, and welcome back from our break. We had some technical difficulties, but I think we worked them out. We will go ahead and continue on with 7.5. Consideration of Agreement between the County of Lake and SCS Field Services for Annual Landfill Gas Collection Systems Operations Monitoring, Maintenance, for Annual Landfill Gas Collection Systems Operations Monitoring Maintenance and Report Services. And I'll give the floor to you, Lars.
All right. Good morning, Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. In 2014, a landfill gas collection and control system was installed at the East Lake landfill. And since that time, SCS Field Services, the company that was referenced in the subject title, SCS has performed annual operations, maintenance, monitoring and reporting services for the county. Those services, at least what is included in SCS's scope of work, is required as a part of our permit. The current agreement with SCS expires soon and ahead of time, staff requested a new quote from SCS. The county code does allow for extensions of annual service contracts so long as the price increase is less than the CPI. In this case, SCS's increase is approximately 5.0, I think it's 5.2, 5.02%. And the CPI is 5.19, so it is less than the CPI. Consequently, staff recommends waiving competitive bidding in accordance with Section 2-38.1 of the county code and approve the agreement with SCS Field Services.
All right. Are there any questions from the board? Is there anyone online that has a comment or anyone in the chambers? All right. I don't see anyone, so I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and SCS Field Services for Annual Landfill Gas Collection System Operations Monitoring Maintenance and Reporting Services.
I think you have to do the way...
You have to do A first.
Yeah, waive the bidding.
And waive the formal bidding process.
So, okay.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to waive the bidding. For, can we do all of those in one? Okay, yes. For Supervisor Sabatier's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lars.
All right, thank you.
With that, we will... Go to our next item, which is our 6.6. Public Hearing Regarding AB 481, California Government Code 7070-7075, Military Equipment Use Presentation and Adoption of Sheriff's Office Military Equipment Use Policy. And with that, we'll invite the sheriff up. So this is just a public hearing? Or is there action that we have to take today now? Okay.
Good morning. Okay, this is on. Good morning, Board. My name is Sheriff Brian Martin. We are here for a presentation of public hearing on military equipment use policy for the sheriff's office. The presentation is going to be made by Lieutenant Luke Bingham today. I want to give you a bit of a warning. Luke got woken up very early this morning at 2:00 a.m. to respond to a call where oddly enough, we had to deploy some of our military equipment. Thankfully, we didn't have to use it. But it seemed fairly appropriate that that were to happen today. So today's presentation, Lieutenant Bingham will discuss the legislation that led up to this requirement. And at the end of the presentation, we'll talk about what steps are necessary from the Board of Supervisors in the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning. LT.
So AB 841 was signed into law by Governor Newsom on January, or excuse me, September 30th, 2021, and it took effect on January 1 of 2022. AB 481 states stated goals are to provide legal enforceable safeguards to the protection of the public, welfare, safety, civil rights and civil liberties before military equipment can be used, funded or acquired and/or used. Section 7071 requires each law enforcement agency to obtain approval of the applicable governing body by adoption of a military equipment use policy by ordinance at a regular meeting prior to taking any action relating to the funding, acquisition, use or collaboration with agencies in the use of military equipment. Section 7071 also requires approval of the board for the continued use of military equipment acquired prior to January 1 of 2022. So this presentation will cover equipment currently possessed by the sheriff's office, which meets the definition of military equipment per AB 481, and allows the sheriff's office and will allow the sheriff's office to answer any questions the board or the community may have prior to drafting an ordinance and adoption of the sheriff's office military equipment policy. So currently, the equipment used in the Lake County Sheriff's Office or possessed by the Lake County Sheriff's Office. So vehicles. First is the Sheriff's Office Crisis Response Unit van. This van was obtained in 2007 at a cost of just over $65,000. It has been used by the sheriff's office since 2007 to current date and actually was used last night. Annual maintenance costs are just over $8,000 for this vehicle. This vehicle was obtained from the South Lake County Fire District as an ambulance, and it was repurposed as a vehicle to transport Crisis Response Unit team members, their equipment and to act as an incident command post during Crisis Response Unit incidents. Next is the LVA 150 Light Armored Vehicle. This vehicle was obtained from the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office in 2014. It was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2015. It was no cost to the sheriff's office. It was given to us by the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office. It has been in utilization since 2015 until today's date. The annual maintenance costs since 2014 is just over or just under $17,000 for this vehicle. It's used by the Crisis Response Unit as a citizen rescue vehicle, a deputy rescue vehicle, and utilized during crisis response incidents for deputy protection and the safe deployment of Crisis Response Unit equipment and breaching of reinforced structures. Sheriff's Office Emergency Operations Center. This was obtained in 2006 via OES grant funding. The initial cost was just under $230,000. The maintenance cost since 2006 has been just under $11,000, and it is normally deployed at pre-planned events and emergencies such as wildfires or critical incidents. Some of you may have seen it at the last fire we had down in Middletown as the operations command post for that incident. Robots and unmanned aircraft. The iRobot Model 510 is a tactical surveillance robot. Sheriff's Office has one of these. It was obtained from the 1033 program in 2017. And the annual maintenance cost for that since 2017 has been $700 for replacement of batteries. Its use is restricted to the Crisis Response Unit. The robot has two cameras, lights, a grasping arm and a microphone. It's very versatile and is used to reduce the risk to deputies during dangerous incidents. The robot has been deployed twice, once during a barricaded subject to incident who had shot at officers and once during a high-risk search warrant service of an armed and dangerous person. Just some more information on it. Next is a MAC bot. We have one of these. And again, it was obtained from the 1033 program in 2015. And its annual maintenance cost since that time has been $700 for replacement of batteries. This is utilized in the same manner as our track robot, the iRobot 1510. And again, it's restricted use to the Crisis Response Unit. Small unmanned aircraft systems. Currently, the sheriff's office does not have any unmanned aerial systems. We are looking into this and actively researching information on the applicability of these and applicable law as to the use of these. However, based on our research thus far, they are very appropriate for us, especially for crime scene reconstruction, disaster response, search and rescue and then officer safety of critical incidents. Great detail and information. Rather than having to send deputies into harm's way or into positions that would risk them injury or death, we can deploy this unit or a unit that we decide in the future, which will give us that intelligence and overall look prior to having to go into that area. And again, we don't currently have any of these in inventory. Distraction devices. These are devices that emit a bright light and loud sound. They're used to momentarily distract suspects and volatile individuals for hostage rescues or apprehension of dangerous individuals. They are ATF-controlled Class C explosives. And they emit a bright light and a thunderous noise. Currently, the sheriff's office deploys two models of these, the CTS 7290 and the CTS 7290 Mini. Currently, we have 46 distraction devices in our inventory. They do have a lifespan of, I believe, approximately five years before they expire. And the cost per unit is $34.81 and $37.51, respectively. They are highly controlled and restricted, and they are only used by certified Crisis Response Unit members. They are kept in a secure facility that is alarmed in a ATF-approved magazine. Chemical munitions. Again, these are used to disorient, distract potentially dangerous individuals, allowing for a safe apprehension. First is the CTS 6340 OC and the CTS 5230B baffled riot CS canisters. Both of these are used by the Corrections Special Emergency Response Team and the Sheriff's Crisis Response Unit. Currently, we have nine of them. They expire after five years, so the 6340 OC will expire in 2026. And then we have 56 of the 5230Bs. 14 of them are currently expired and used for training purposes only. 18, 24 of them were purchased in 2018 and will expire next year. And 12 of them will expire in 2026. And they are each a cost per unit of $36.61. These three canisters are deployed and used by the Correctional Facility Special Emergency Response Team, the DEFTEC 120s, the 180s and the 5430s. These both are used in the Correctional Facility. Currently, we have a quantity of three of the 1020s that will expire next year. We have six of the 1080s that will expire next year. And then we have seven of the 5030s that will expire in 2026. We have three of the CTS 5231s that the CERT team uses in the Correctional Facility that will expire in 2026. And then we have 10 of the... That one, but of the smaller 8230 tactical smoke canisters. We have 10 of those, which are used by the Crisis Response Unit. Six of them are currently expired and used for training purposes only. And four of them will expire in 2023. And then of the 5230s, we have 11. And again, six of them are expired for training purposes only. And five of them will expire in 2026. The ones that we retain for training purposes only due to the cost per unit and the annual training that is required for both the CERT team and the Crisis Response Unit, we keep the expired ones for training purposes only for deployment and instructing members on how to use them and properly deploy them other than deploying unexpired rounds or unexpired canisters because of the cost. This is a Smith &amp; Wesson canister launcher. This device is attached to a standard shotgun and uses a 12-gauge launching cartridge to deploy those canister rounds into structures from a distance, providing safety for the deputies and the officers that are deploying those rounds. These are what are commonly referred to as barricade rounds, but they are 40-millimeter projectiles. They are chemical munition deployment rounds, and they are used for deployments when there are barriers in the way that canisters cannot be deployed into a structure. These are used to be deployed into the structure through windows or soft core doors. Currently, we have six of the 4340s, 17 of the 4330s and four of the 4630s. And the cost per units are listed there. These are restricted to use by the Crisis Response Unit only and only by trained members. This is a DEFTEC 1090, commonly referred to as a sting ball. This is used in the Correctional Facility for dealing with riots or riotous-type situations. These emit a bright light and a loud noise similar to a flashbang or a distractionary device, and they disperse small rubber pellets. Currently, we have 10 of those, and they expire after five years. And they will expire by the end of this year. They'll be expired. At a cost per unit of $52.50. Currently, only Correctional CERT members are certified to deploy these and only under the approval of a supervisor. CTS 9594 is an OC. It's similar to the 1090. It emits a bright light, sound, rubber pellet, and it also disperses OC powder. So you have the chemical irritant that's dispersed also. We currently have 12 of these that will expire in 2026 at a cost of $43.68 each. And again, they are restricted to CERT team members, certified CERT team members, and a deployment must be authorized by a supervisor. This is a FN 303. The sheriff's office currently has two of these at a cost of $1,299 each. Correction, they have two of them at a cost of $1,299 each. These are gas-operated or air-operated devices that deploy a less-than-lethal round that has a chemical munition, a small amount of OC powder inside of them. They're used for distraction and pain compliance for violent subjects inside the Correctional Facility. They are only used by the Correctional Facility and by the CERT team inside the Correctional Facility. This is the FN 303 round, which the FN 303 deploys. We currently have 225 of them. They expire three years from the date of manufacturer. We have 333 of them that are expired and used for training purposes only and recertification purposes. All of the aforementioned items, robots, distraction devices and chemical munitions are strictly controlled, used, trained with by the Lake County Sheriff's Office Crisis Response Unit and the Corrections Special Emergency Response Team. They are stored in climate-controlled and alarmed rooms. The equipment that is held by the Crisis Response Unit is in a facility that has a perimeter fence. It is 24-hour video surveillance and alarmed. And only Crisis Response Unit members have access to the room. And the deployment of any of those equipment must be authorized by the Crisis Response Unit Commander or Sheriff. Access to chemical munitions and equipment at the Correctional Facility is limited to the CERT team. And the deployment and use of those chemical munitions, equipment and the FN 303 is approved, has to be approved by the CERT team commander, the Correctional Facility commander or the sheriff. The extended-range kinetic energy projectiles, these are commonly referred to as less-lethal munitions. And they're used to distract through pain compliance with a reduced potential for causing death or seriously injury when used. First is the Armor Holdings 40-millimeter launcher. This is also what we talked about earlier, the barricade rounds, the chemical barricade rounds. This is the launcher that is used to deploy those into structures. Sheriff's Office currently has four of these at a cost of $998 each. They were obtained in 2005. These are the rounds that the 40-millimeter launcher launches. They're projectile, less-than-lethal rounds. Currently, we have four of the 6325s and 221 of the 4557s, 10 of which are expired and used for training purposes only. The use of this platform and the use of these rounds is restricted to CERT team members, Crisis Response Team members and trained and certified supervisors. Training to use this platform and these kinetic energy platforms is an eight-hour less-than-lethal course and annual department recertification, training and qualification. This is a Remington 870 less-than-lethal platform. This is basically a 12-gauge shotgun that was converted in 2005 to be a less-lethal platform. It is issued and trained... It is issued and trained, it is issued to train and qualified patrol deputies. It is also at the Correctional Facility in a secured armory, and it is deployable in the Correctional Setting by trained and qualified Correctional deputies. Again, this also requires an eight-hour less-than-lethal certification course and annual department recertification training and qualification. This is CTS 2581 kinetic energy munition. This is what the previous platform launches. We have one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-three of these. They expire five years from the date of manufacture, which is 2020, so they'll be expired in 2025, at a cost of four dollars and fifty-five cents each. These are standard issue for patrol and corrections. All listed equipment that we just spoke about is governed by Sheriff's Office Policy and California Penal Code. Sheriff's Office Policy, 300 use of force, 308 controlled device techniques, special purpose vehicles, custody used to force, and then California Penal Code 835A, use of reasonable force, and then 836, arrest by a peace officer. There are also a few applicable federal laws that are governed, distraction devices, as I spoke, they are ATF-controlled devices. And then any complaints pertaining to the deployment of the aforementioned equipment are received and investigated per Lake County Sheriff's Office Policy 1019 complaints. So the following equipment is not currently utilized by the Sheriff's Office and is retained for training purposes only. This is an M-113 tracked armored vehicle. This was obtained by the Sheriff's Office in 1996. It was assigned to the Sheriff's Office Crisis Response Unit. It was trained with, but it was never deployed in that time. The Sheriff's Office is currently looking to dispose of this vehicle in a lawful manner, which could include recycling a scrap metal or permanently disabling the 113 for display. This is the LAV 150 light armored vehicle. This is similar to the current operational vehicle that we have. This was obtained by the Sheriff's Office in 2002 from the 1033 program and was not made operational due to the cost and has been used for parts since obtaining the operational LAV from the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office. We're also looking at disposing of this vehicle in the same manner as the M-113. This is a thirty-seven-millimeter federal laboratories launching platform. This was used by the Crisis Response Unit. It has since been taken out of inventory since obtaining the forty-millimeter launching systems. We currently have one of these at a cost of ninety dollars. It was obtained in 1995. It is not currently deployed. It is stored in the Crisis Response Unit locker and is restricted to use by the Crisis Response Unit team for training purposes only. This is a thirty-seven-millimeter Defense Technologies Model 1315. Again, we only have one of these at a cost of ninety dollars. It was obtained in 2000 and has been replaced by the current forty millimeters. And again, it is restricted to Crisis Response Unit members for training purposes only and kept in the secure locker. This is a forty-millimeter DEFTEC 1290 barricade round, similar to those that we spoke about earlier. And then on the right is the FN 303 impact projectile. Both of these rounds are expired, and they are retained for training purposes only due to the cost of new rounds. We keep the expired rounds so we can train and qualify our deputies and Correctional Similar to the previous slide, this is a Defense Technologies Drag Stabilized Twelve-Gauge Less-Lethal Round. We currently have five-hundred-and-twenty-three of these. They are all expired, and again, we keep them for training and qualification purposes. This is a Colt nine-millimeters, sixty-three, six-thirty-five, nine-millimeter submachine gun. We currently have six of these at a cost of seven-hundred-and-eighty dollars. They were purchased in 2000. They were utilized by the Crisis Response Unit but have since been replaced and no longer used. We keep these for training purposes only. They are kept in the Sheriff's Office Armory and use, and access to them is restricted to firearms instructors for training purposes only. This is a Colt M-16A2 Commando. This was purchased or purchased by the Sheriff's Office in 1998. We have one of these. Cost was seven-hundred-and-seventy-eight dollars. And again, it is no longer used by the Sheriff's Office for any purpose other than training, and access, again, is restricted to firearms instructors. Penal Code Section 34005B and Section 16580 allows the Sheriff's Office to retain seized weapons rather than destroying them for official law enforcement purposes. The following weapons were retained by the Sheriff's Office for those purposes. This is an auto ordnance 1927A1 Thompson rifle. Again, it was retained by the Sheriff's Office for training purposes only, and its access and use is restricted to firearms instructors for training purposes. This is a STEN nine-millimeter submachine gun. We have one of these, and it was retained by the Sheriff's Office for training purposes, and access, again, is restricted to firearms instructors. This is an AK-47 tactical pistol that was retained by the Sheriff's Office and used for instruction and training purposes, and again, restricted to firearms instructors. And then lastly is a 1951 Russian SKS that was retained by the Sheriff's Office for training purposes, and again, its access is restricted to firearms instructors. That is the end of the presentation of the, all of the equipment that is utilized by the Sheriff's Office or in possession of the Sheriff's Office that was deemed military equipment by AB 481.
West Chair Scott?
I do have a question for your last slides. I know we've received a lot of public input and concern about this, when they see military equipment being used in our police force. So those last slides you showed of the guns, you said they were obtained. Could you explain a little bit further how they were obtained and where they were obtained?
Those were, without speaking too many individually, but those are typically evidence guns that are seized over the course of investigation. We'll come across firearms like that right here in Lake County and seize them. The reason we keep them, as he said, was for training purposes. Typically, those aren't the type of firearms that law enforcement officers receive instruction on during the course of their academy, but it's good to have them for ongoing training in the event that they do encounter them. Obviously, some deputy had to encounter that at some point during his career, and those are just the ones that we've kept. That does not represent all the illegal firearms that we've seized, and the ability to train our deputies so that they can safely disarm them and safely handle them is provided by the training opportunities by having those firearms.
I appreciate that, because I think our public needs to fully understand what our deputies are coming across in our community, in our community right here in Lake County, not in the communities outside. I know we always think it's not going to happen here, but this equipment's already here. And I appreciate the presentation. I support you on this. I think we definitely need to have the tools in place to be able to protect the community and our deputies doing the work. I know there's a concern when, again, military equipment, that this is going to be used every day, that we're going to see this. It's not. To only use when needed. How often do you think that we pull out, that the CERT team, how often are they out with this equipment?
The presentation included the numbers. Unfortunately, it's out of date as of today, because, as I said, we did deploy it today, but it's fairly rare, as you'll see from those numbers. This is one of those things where I would equate having this equipment as very similar to having insurance. Nobody likes to have insurance, but when you need it, you're really glad you do have it. So the deployment, and one thing I want to touch on, too, when we talk about the CRU, the Crisis Response Unit, a lot of agencies might refer that to different things, but they might call it a SWAT team, a hostage negotiation team, but it's the team of highly-specialized people that not only respond to these tactical situations, but also a portion of that team is involved in negotiations where we try to de-escalate, talk people out of any situation that would result in violence. It does seem to be becoming a more frequent deployment over the last couple of years. It seems that society is becoming increasingly more violent and dangerous, but as far as, it's nothing that happens on a daily basis, I would say. But we do, in addition to the unincorporated areas, we also provide services to our incorporated cities, and we've had several calls within those jurisdictions as well. But the deployment amounts are included in the presentation. I can't remember, it was about up to sixteen now with the light armored vehicle, which is deployed in the most dangerous of situations.
I appreciate that explanation. And there was also concern that if we approve this, then they will give you full range to be able to go do whatever you want with the funding and be able to bring in military equipment. So how will that work? If you want to go buy a piece of equipment, what will you need to do if it's a military piece of equipment?
Absolutely. The policy, should it be accepted, and the ordinance, should it be passed by the Board of Supervisors, require the sheriff to return to the Board of Supervisors with any request for future equipment purchases. Future equipment purchases could simply include replenishing the ordinance that's set to expire. As indicated in the presentation, an unmanned aerial system platform, we don't have, but we want to include that in the platform, we would be required to come to the Board of Supervisors and request approval for that. And it'd also require the Board of Supervisors to accept our policy, which is, I'm all for transparency, we put it out there, which outlines the situations under which it can be deployed. Certainly, I don't want to live in an area where we have tanks running down the roads, and we don't live in that area, and I want to keep it that way. But we also live in an area where we're quite remote from other agencies and other resources, and we have an expectation that law enforcement respond to these dangerous situations and handle them in the best way possible. And I want, this is important for me, because I want to make sure that every time we go to one of these situations, we send our men and women in uniform home alive at the end of it.
I appreciate that explanation. So this will not be the last time public will have input when the sheriff goes to purchase another piece of equipment. So it's open, and we'll be transparent about this. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatia?
I appreciate the conversation. I also, I can understand why a bill like this was passed to create transparency. At the same time, I have concerns about the level of transparency, because now we know exactly what is, what we have and where. So my question to you is, and I'm certain I know the answer, but it's a concern, what is this, how, I guess I don't want the details, but I have concerns of the security levels and if there's any need to increase the security levels to make sure that that equipment is held secure from anyone other than the CERT team that should have access to that.
I'm very confident in the security of the location, as Lieutenant Bingham indicated in his presentation. Storage of certain of those devices requires ATF approval, and those devices are held in a facility that's been approved by the Bureau of ATF.
How often do they do a security check?
It's random.
Okay, good.
It's not on a quarterly or yearly or bi-yearly. It's random. They just do, whenever they decide they want to do an inspection, they'll contact us and they'll come up.
Right. And it is unfortunate, we unfortunately hear about it, seems on a weekly basis, of the power that is held within the hands of our residents and the misuse of that power, and to not have the ability for our law enforcement to be able to protect our communities against that power, I think is just, it's a necessary thing for us to make sure that we can protect our communities, as well as what you stated, protect our law enforcement officers as well from harms away. I do have one last question. Expired, can you tell me exactly what happens with munitions that are expired? Are they less capable of doing the job that they're created for? Are they, like, what exactly happens to the munitions when they expire?
Well, when you're talking to chemical munitions, it's the degradation.
Close.
He's been up since two.
I think that's two. Of the chemicals themselves, so they're less effective. So we will rotate those to a training once they expire so that we can continue with the, I think it's, we do quarterly trainings and qualifications with all of our team members to ensure the deployment and the proper deployment of these. So basically, the chemicals are less effective than an unexpired chemical munition. When it comes to the less-lethal platforms, they have a tendency to degrade to the point where they're no longer flight-stable, no longer as accurate as they're supposed to be, or have a potential to come apart during deployment. So those are rotated out for the safety of the community and the armed officers.
Appreciate that.
I have one more question. So the public can fully understand the Sheriff's Department and everything that goes on in there. Are you going to be bringing back your Sheriff's Citizens Academy? Because I think that was an awesome program to fully understand the operations of the Sheriff's Department, being able to go in there. I don't know if anybody else on this board has done that, but it's an awesome opportunity.
We're certainly exploring options to do that. We're, like many departments, we're struggling with staffing challenges, but I fully agree with you. I wish we get enough participation. I think the last time we tried to put a Citizens Academy together, I think we only had six or seven people express interest, and we ended up canceling because of that. But with your support and encouragement, maybe we can get enough people in there to fill a class.
It was fun. It was a lot of fun.
I think we want, to make it worthwhile, I think we're looking for a minimum of fifteen.
I enjoyed it.
I could help recruit that. Supervisor Sabatia answered a lot of the questions that I had, so I do have one more, but Supervisor Simon, go ahead.
Yeah, so obviously, let's support you guys moving forward with this, and transparency is real important. There is, I would just make, you know, just one comment of everything reading through here, obviously, all parts of the jobs and everything, but, you know, I just need to make the statement about water cannons. And I know they're utilized in different areas, but, you know, for me, coming from a minority group and other things, water cannons during the civil rights fights and other things were used in manners that I'd rather not us carry that on here in Lake County, you know. So obviously, in support of it, but water cannons, to me, brings us right back to the civil rights fights and other things like that that happen here in this country to minorities and, you know, ultimately, you know, not saying that's what we do here, but carrying that on and that thing, it just jumps out to me. So I need to make the statement on that, and I don't know if you guys have ever deployed it, but it was just in the overall uses or nonuses. It says tasers, shockwave, microwave weapons, water cannons, long-range devices. So I just need to make that statement on water cannons.
So the inclusion of a water cannon was probably included in the legislation. We don't have water cannons, and I have no intention of acquiring or deploying water cannons. I hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, just want to make that statement. But in support, obviously, support you guys, and you said the statement number one, making sure our law enforcement come home safely. And that's, I want to make sure we always have that support, but I needed to make that statement on the water cannons.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate this presentation. I appreciate the transparency, and it's so important to make sure that all of our law enforcement are safe on the job. Really appreciate you for coming up to my neighborhood in the middle of the night, keeping everybody safe. That's all I have.
Yeah. No, this presentation, I know it's course mandated by the, you know, AB 481. You know, I think it's important, and I'm just going to state this for the record, that I don't know, you know, what we can do next time things like this come forward. We have to do a better job of explaining things like, we shouldn't have the number of rounds. And the reason I say this is because I know criminals, and when they get out, sometimes they get out to go back in or to work for people that are in. We have high-level criminals in our jail right now because of the prison system, and so for me, I know they're keen. I know that. And so for me, this is good that we're transparent this way, but at the same time, are we not giving everything that we have to the people that want to do harm or do things in jail? And I just say that because I know that type of mentality, being in the service and things of that nature. I do appreciate that you use a lot of the expired rounds and whatnot for training, because that's commonly, you know, that's a good thing, and I'm glad to hear that, because I was like, what do you do? Recycle them, or do you just shoot them, or, you know, like, and then also seizing or holding on to equipment that's, that you're not already given, because you have to know how to dismantle it when you're in a situation. You have to know how to ensure that it's empty or whatever the case may be for other people's safety. So I'm glad to see that a lot of that is explained. Also, the statement of supervisors have to be given, and when you say supervisor, you're meaning supervisors in your department, not us. So supervisors have to be given authority for you to be able to use some of it. So it's very important. And I say that, too, because there are some people in our communities that would say, oh, so all he has to do is, I mean, there is people that would say that, but I'm glad that there's a lot of measures, there's a lot of statements that say, only in this environment we would use it, or in a crisis and things of that nature. And there's plans to dispose of some of the outdated things. I think that's important, too.
I'm anticipating there'll be some public input on this. I believe the next steps are, um, should the board approve the policy? Uh, the next step would be to pass a resolution. There's a timeframe in which that's going to occur?
180 days from the start of the presentation, which was on May 1st, when we first notified the board of this presentation. We have 180 days from May 1st to draft an ordinance that accepts the sheriff's office military equipment policy.
And by all needs, uh, by all means, given the, uh, the timeframe there, we're certainly not in a rush to have that ordinance, um, passed. Uh, so with board direction, we will come back at a, a subsequent time. They'll also allow adequate time. I'm sure there's, uh, members of the community that are going to have some input for the board of supervisors that may not have made it today. Um, and that, uh, that period of time will allow that to happen, uh, but we can certainly set this for a later date for, um, re, uh, for acceptance of a, a resolution.
I think too, uh, one of the questions I didn't get to ask, uh, got on a soapbox, sorry, was this SUAS, SUAS, uh, and I know that you're probably looking to get one of those. Would that be, would that be available for cannabis situations as well?
Uh, it would be available for a, a variety of things. Um, available for, if another agency would need to use it for cannabis enforcement, certainly. Um, there are certain rules when you're using in a law enforcement capacity, uh, in, in investigations, uh, that have to be followed. I'm not, um, super clear on what all those rules are, um, but it's got a, a variety of applications. It can be, uh, compliance issues. It can be, uh, crime scene documentation. It can be search and rescue efforts. It could be, um, disaster assessments after, um, after a disaster, whether it be a fire or a flood. Um, there's, the possibilities are, there's a lot of possibilities available for that type of system.
Thanks. All right. Supervisor Sabatier.
I just wanted to, uh, two things. One, um, just remind everybody of the enhanced accountabilities that have been put into place, the body cameras, uh, things like that. Uh, those are still in play as well. So while we might talk, uh, about equipment that for some people might be a sensitive subject, uh, that there is still that elevated accountability that comes into play. Uh, and also the annual report, are you, um, I really appreciated the annual report that you provided to us just a few weeks ago. Uh, is it going to be a part of that report or will be a separate report because of the bill, uh, requiring a separate reporter? Can it be put all together in one? Cause it would be interesting just kind of be able to look at all the stats together in one area.
I think you read my mind because I think that's a, um, it, it should be a part of our annual report. Um, and that wouldn't, uh, there's not a statutory requirement, I believe, for, uh, just a general annual report, but this creates a statutory requirement for an annual report related to this. So it's a great time just to incorporate it within, uh, an overall annual report, uh, for the sheriff's office. I, I'd give that consideration as well. So I believe it's very likely that it will.
So like, let's say hypothetically, if you have to use some of these rounds, like for a specific reason, would you be able to reorder more? Do you need to go through us to order more? How does that work?
We would have to come back to you for authorization prior to reordering more.
Okay, so, okay. And that's kind of why I made the statement before, because if I'm in and out and I realize and I tell people, well, after 10 riots, you know, what happens then? You see, so, okay, that's, that's why anyhow. Uh, anyone from the public want to, uh, comment on this?
Let's not have one.
Thank you. Brad Rasmussen, Lakeport Police Chief. I just wanted to speak, uh, briefly. We had to go through the same process with our city council. Ours is already approved. Um, we do have an interest in seeing the board approve the sheriff's policy, um, not only, uh, because we support them and what they have to do in the county, but if we were to have a tactical situation in the city, we don't have a SWAT team, a crisis response team or anything like that. So we would rely on a mutual aid request to the sheriff to come in and assist us with that. And, uh, for him to be able to use that equipment and effectively help us, this would have to be approved. So we have an interest in that. We support their policy. It's very similar to ours. It's just that they have a higher level of equipment than we maintain. So, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Is there anyone else in the chambers? All right, uh, I seen a hand on, online up. I know also it was, it was Betsy and I know she has a public comment in the e comments. Oh, there she goes.
Uh, thank you Supervisor Crandall. And, um, I, I have two questions if I may. I'd be very interested to know how many riots we have actually had in our jail, uh, that have required this level of response? And, um, uh, how many situations in which, uh, law enforcement officers have had to deploy, uh, some of these, um, you know, larger pieces of equipment? I understand the riot guns and all that kind of stuff, but, but the big pieces of equipment. Also appreciate Chief Rasmussen's, um, you know, uh, understanding of the level of service and the care that the sheriff's department provides. I believe the bill is very valuable. Uh, of course I am a, an anti-war activist and I do, uh, not like having tanks, uh, or, you know, the idea that we have the possibility of ordering missiles, you know, that kind of thing. There's enough war going on on the planet right now that we don't need to have that. But how much are we really using and what's, what's the experience of the sheriff's department that warrants this?
Thank you for the questions. Um, so we haven't had any, um, riots within the jail. Um, I believe some of the equipment's been used, um, in, in situations where maybe it had some small fights or some violently combative inmates that don't want to, uh, move out of their cells for whatever reason. Um, and as far as the deployment of the other equipment, it's included in the presentation. Um, we're, we're fortunate, uh, that we haven't had large scale riots in the community. Um, but I, I, there's been several dozen times where I've encountered situations in my term as a sheriff where something has never happened here before, but, you know, we've had it happen. Um, everything from active shooters to, um, to, to cascading disasters. Um, so the, uh, the possibility of ordering missiles doesn't exist. I don't think we're going to be, be getting any missiles in the, uh, in the interim. I hope that answers the question.
Is there anyone else with, uh, public input online? And I don't see any, so I'll close public input and bring it back to the board and Vice Chair Scott.
I just wanted to make a comment that, uh, the sheriff pointed out that we haven't had any major riots in our community. And I would have to say that's because our sheriffs and our police force are out and about when they feel that there might be an issue. I know that there's been some protests the last couple of years and they come out just to make sure that the public is safe. I know for myself, I've been on Main Street here and, and the chief has come out just to make sure that things are safe for not just the people that are protesting, but the streets. And so I really appreciate, um, the fact that we're, we're proactive. We go out there if we think there might be an issue, um, to make sure that there's not an issue.
I think too, I just wanted to add, I know that, that tanks was mentioned, but these are light, lighted armored vehicles. They're, they're to protect from rounds. I know a couple others had, um, you know, the availability to deter 50 caliber. And we can't determine what citizens have or people, criminals or whoever has. So these type of, this isn't a tank. And I know sometimes civilians, um, they mistake some of these vehicles for tanks and whatnot. Like you're not asking for a Paladin or a Howitzer or anything like that. And if you were, I'm pretty sure we'd be like, why do you need artillery or anything like that? But, um, these, these I see are necessary for specific situations. And, um, so yeah, I just wanted to highlight that.
Right. And the, uh, that, the one piece of equipment, the M113, looks like a tank. It's a big metal box with tracked, uh, uh, track wheels on it. And we have been trying to get rid of that. It turns out it's a little bit more difficult to get rid of it than simply putting it on Craigslist. Um, so we're exploring options on that. It took, uh, quite a bit of time to actually track down the paperwork, uh, from the Department of Defense. It's been here for so long that I'm sure, um, the, the paperwork's been purged, locked away, put in some archive somewhere at the federal government. It's not very important to them. We were able to finally track down our paperwork here. Uh, and, and, and we do have an interest in, in getting rid of it, whether it's to, uh, was, uh, stated in the presentation, uh, put it out for scrap metal or disable it and make it, uh, a display somewhere along the way. Um, but getting rid of some of that stuff is, uh, proves its own unique challenges.
You could just put UN on the side of it because that's what the.
We could. Put it up at public auction. I don't think that would be a good idea.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you for the presentation. I don't know if there's anything else we have to go over on this, but.
I don't think so. If, uh, the board wants to give, uh, either direction or indication on when, uh, they might like to see this brought back for, uh, reading of the resolution?
Any ideas?
Within the 180 days that you have, please.
Within the next week or within the next couple of months? How are we? Happy to do whatever.
Couple of months. We'll say a couple of months.
Okay. All right. We'll get something on future agenda. Thank you for your support. I appreciate the time for the presentation. I want to thank Lieutenant Bingham, uh, for, um, for putting this together. He put in a lot of hard work, uh, and then, uh, got, as I said, he got called out at two o'clock this morning. So it was a exceptionally long day for him. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So it looks like we're, uh, on our 6.7. Public hearing, consideration of resolution, approving resolutions in capital fire facility and equipment plan submitted by Lake County Fire Agencies and updating the Lake County Capital Fire Facility and Equipment Plan. And I'll give this to Florida Susan Parker, our CAO.
Yes, and before I, we take up this item, uh, we need another technical break.
Okay. We will take.
I apologize for that.
We will take a break and, uh, yeah, we'll be back. Okay. And does Matthew hear us?
Just gotta get back to his office.
Okay.
I don't remember what item we want to start over.
6.7.
Yeah, yeah. All right. We're, we're ready to go? Okay. So, uh, our 6.7 is, uh, the public hearing, consideration of a resolution approving resolutions in capital fire facility and equipment plan submitted by Lake County Fire Agencies and updating the Lake County Fire, uh, Capital Fire Facility and Equipment Plan. And Susan?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Board. The public here, this public hearing is held annually to, to approve a resolution approving the resolutions that each fire district approve for the collection of fees. The fees were established in 1992 and are collected at the time of issuing a building permit for the respective fire district. The fees are used for expansion and development of fire facilities and purchases of equipment needed as a result of new development. The maximum amount that can be collected is $1 per square foot and each fire district has been requesting the maximum amount for the past several years. Approving this resolution also updates the Lake County Capital Fire Facility and Equipment Plan. I'm, I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from anyone on the board?
If there are, yeah.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I believe it's the maximum that they can request?
Yes.
Okay. Just, just wanted to check on that. And then I know that, um, there will be further conversation about the cannabis revision, but I, I just want to put it out there. Uh, we need to make sure that we know exactly what is a building that does get this fee, um, attached to it. Cause there's been a lot of conversation about whether or not certain projects should, uh, provide that fee to the fire, local fire districts or not. Uh, so that's something that I hope with the revision that's going to happen and the committee that's being put together that they can get to the, uh, more precise, um, details on which ones do get those fees attached to it. Cause I think it's important that we make sure, uh, especially for safety, uh, buildings should be able to do that.
I will follow up with, um, Director Darby to make sure, and just in case she's not watching at this time, I'll make sure that she, um, gets that information.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Anybody from the public? Anybody online?
They're still with us. Thank you for sticking with us.
So we'll bring it back to the board for action.
I will offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Um, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Aye.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So we will move on to our 6.8, our 1115 presentation by the Lake County Museum Curator on the status of the Lake County Museum. And it looks like we have the team here, Lars Ewing and Clark Maccabee.
Good morning. Lars Ewing, Public Services Director. Um, I'm here just to, to introduce, uh, Clark Maccabee, the museum curator. We have, uh, in my time in public services, in my time in public services, we have not come to the board with, uh, with a state of the museums, uh, address, so to speak. Um, so I, I thought it would be, uh, be appropriate and, and helpful to, to just let the board, let the public know, uh, the state of the museums, um, and, you know, where we are, where we, we hope to go. Um, uh, Clark has a, a passion for it. He has, uh, a, a depth of experience, uh, that is of, of great benefit to the county. So I, I look forward to his presentation and, and, and I'll be, be here, uh, to answer maybe some administrative type questions, but Clark on the operational side is, uh, he's, he's got the, uh, the helm for sure. And I, I say that because of his Navy background too, so.
Thank you, Lars. I have the unenviable position of being placed for public speaking in between people and their lunch. It's the worst place you can be for public speaking. Okay, um, I'll get right to it. Uh, state of the museums, preserving, promoting, presenting all Lake County history for all people, for all time. Next slide. Museums matter and it's kind of a laundry list, but museums are really important. The county, um, a long time ago, 1935 is a matter of fact, in the height of the depression, decided that it was important that there be a county museum. And so that was formed, it was built between a combination of local women's groups and, um, county money and also work, uh, work administration money and founded by Belle Davidson. One of the important things about museums is that it's where people can come together, understand their diversity. Uh, in 2001, American Association of Museums found nine out of 10 Americans trusted museums more than any other source of information. Now, a lot of stuff has transpired in the last 20 years, so they did another study in 2021. The public continues to regard museums as highly trustworthy, ranking second only to friends and family and significantly more trustworthy than researchers and scientists, non-governmental organizations generally, various news organizations, the government, corporations in business and not insignificantly social media. Museums are an important part of a community's economy. We have a number of employees that work in the county museums. We also have volunteers and we're also supported by nonprofits. Next slide, please. So we all understand kind of the, uh, challenges of the pandemic. Uh, the next few slides are going to illustrate what that has meant to us here at the county museums. We track visitors, international, national, people from California, people from within the county, folks who don't indicate where they're from. And so you see at the schoolhouse, we've had a significant difference, uh, in between the pre-pandemic in 2019 and currently, and this is year to date as of the end of May. Next slide, please. Uh, we really suffered here at the courthouse museum, basically a 300% reduction of visitors. Why is it important that we have visitors? Uh, it's a place where they can gather, they can find information, uh, they can get entertainment. But we also rely for our exhibits and some of our collection care on door donations. And all of that goes into a restricted fund, uh, to improve our, um, programming and exhibits And all of that goes into a restricted fund to improve our programming and exhibits museum. Next slide. Gibson in Middletown, our newest museum. Basically, you can see a 600% decrease from 2019 attendance to 2021. Next slide. We're involved in a number of public-private partnerships. Recently, the Friends of the Lake County Museum, so the Courthouse Museum here in Lakeport, they donated $7,000 for new security cameras for our museum. They also bought the previous set of security cameras eight years ago. That became obsolete. Gibson recently donated $700 for a portable large format scanner. Lower Lake will be providing the funding for a gazebo to enhance the campus out there so we can do outdoor events, speakers, poetry, so forth. We're also working with the Lake County Poet Laureate, Georgina, and she is doing a workshop and a poetry writing at the end of this week. And I will be participating with the state parks at the Clear Lake State Park. They're doing campfire talks, and I've been asked to provide some content for that. So basically, think of ghost stories and legend lore type of things Saturday night out at the park. This summer, we've expanded from just doing it at the courthouse, our outreach for local youth. We call them family fun days because they're on Fridays, Family Fun Fridays. And then we're also going to do them out at Lower Lake. There's not a lot for young students to do in Lower Lake, so we're going to conduct three different events. Each, each event has a particular theme. Agricultural Day, Cultural Day will be going over some of the local Pomo culture. And then Slime Day is popular with everybody. One of our most well-attended events. And we're back doing school tours. And so majority of our tours at the Courthouse Museum or the Schoolhouse Museum. And we also offer through partnership with the Wine Alliance and our nonprofits, the Buses on Us. So we provide transportation costs for any school district in the county that wants to bring their kids to one of the museums. Their transportation department will send an invoice that we forward on to the respective nonprofit, so the Preservation Committee at the Schoolhouse, the Friends of Lake County Courthouse Museum here. And so in that way, every student has an opportunity to visit the museums because here in Lake County, when they come visit our museums, that may be the only museum experience they receive as, as a youngster. And so we think it's really important, as do our supporting nonprofits, as, as does the Wine Alliance. Typically, every other year, we, on behalf of one or the other nonprofits, we submit a grant to the Wine Alliance. With the pandemic, we still have funding available, so we haven't submitted a recent grant request to them. Next slide. There's an update on the Lake Pomo sculpture. And this is the most recent version of the maquette with the figures finalized. All we need to do now is the actual paraphernalia and each figure's details such as a tully skirt and regalia for the male dancer. To date, we've raised $45,000 and we're waiting notification on a grant to push us over the top to fund the sculpture. One of the things I found during the pandemic was we had very little, we had no foot traffic. We were closed much of the time. And so we didn't have a lot of engagement with our community. And so with the addition of an assistant curator whose specialty is social media, we were able, once she came on board, to do more virtual exhibits and reach our community, even though our doors were still closed. Facebook, we had 5,700 posts in the last three weeks. We have 2,900 followers, which I'm quite happy about because if you look at our peer museums, Mendocino, 1,600 followers, and I don't know if you've heard, they are considering, the county is considering closing that museum because of budgetary constraints. Even far larger county, population-wise, Sonoma and Napa, we have a bigger footprint online, and we use TikTok, Instagram and YouTube. We also have a number of our oral histories. What's coming up? We typically in a year do three county, where we produce one or two large temporary exhibits, two minor exhibits, and then quarterly virtual exhibits. Our newest one is very apropos for this period of time. It's going to be on the water. So we'll discuss water rights, we'll discuss the history of the lake and the water, Cache Creek Dam, et cetera. Thank you. Any questions?
Supervisor Pyska?
Well, first of all, I love those icons.
You love the what?
I like, I love the icons that somebody made, and they look like.
Oh, that, yeah, that was Carolyn's.
Yeah, those are great. So I appreciate the presentation. Thank you. My kids and I, we go to the libraries every summer, I mean, the museums every summer. Like to watch the changing exhibits, and we're probably a couple of those really low numbers the last couple of years.
Well, we appreciate it. Remember, tell all your friends it's the best deal for the taxpayers' money because the museum admission is free.
And on a hot, hot day in the afternoon when you're out running errands, it's a nice, cool place to pop in with your kids. That's what we do.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I had a question about cameras. Was there a reason for installing the cameras? Were you seeing some vandalism? Were you?
Yes.
Needing to see, I'm just curious, do you still see that? Are you struggling with that?
Not anymore. We did have some minor vandalism from the homeless. We also had some suspected issues with theft. And the previous cameras just didn't give us enough, enough resolution to tell. Plus, we also expanded. We had eight cameras originally, now we have 12 cameras. So the back door has a camera, the entryway has a camera, and then there's better coverage within the spaces, including entry into our restricted areas such as archival, archival storage where we have a significant amount of very high-value objects.
Right. And I'm guessing that it's possible at the state level, but I don't believe we have a historical building ordinance. Are these buildings kind of marked as historical buildings? Just mainly the reason I ask for the question is somebody vandalizing those buildings is more than just vandalizing a mailbox. You're vandalizing a historical monument, and just kind of curious if there's anything added to that or if it's still seen as a building as far as our laws are concerned.
Well, there is no historic property ordinance within the county. There's one that protects archaeological sites. The two nationally registered historic properties you can see from the front door of the Courthouse Museum, which is the Carnegie Library and, and the Courthouse Museum. There are some state-designated ones. We do not have a county register of historic places, which I encourage the board to look into because there are certain grants we are not eligible for because we do not have a historic property ordinance.
All right. And I know that I did have a conversation with Director Ewing. And this goes for most of our destinations that we try to bring people to. You don't know it's there until you smack into it. And I know that on 29, there is a directional sign for a museum in Kelseyville or for a historical building in Kelseyville. But until you reach the schoolhouse less than 200 yards from it, you don't know that you're, and so I'd like to look into those things to see if we can help direct people towards those monuments that we have here to try and increase those numbers.
Yeah, and as a follow-up to that, that's one of the reasons that we're here. This is something that Clark had brought up and we are working on behind the scenes along with what, something you brought up, which is, which is the marketing. You have not seen the 2020, 2022, 23 budget, but you'll be seeing it very soon. Including, included in there is some additional marketing funds for museums, which, you know, this is a little bit of a well-timed presentation here. While it was not intentional, I'll jump on that opportunity because we, if you don't know that those museums are there, or if you don't know what, what is in them, maybe you see some icons, you know, that are up there. But what is that, what is the focus of each of those museums? So trying to, trying to draw people in, that's, that's a big use of that increase of funding that is proposed to come from, I believe, the marketing budget into museums.
Okay. But thank you for the presentation.
Here, Mos, welcome.
All right. I will open it up for public input if there's anybody that has any comments or questions on this item. I don't see anybody in the room. I'm looking on Zoom. I don't see anybody, so I'll bring it back to the board and say thank you. I do appreciate this presentation, and I know you and I have talked about some things, you know, that we need to work on. One of them, trying to reinvigorate the Heritage Commission, you know, that we talked about before, looking at that. And I do agree with you that we do need some, to be able to qualify for more grant funding to hold specific items because a lot of it's stuck in Berkeley or, you know, wherever, you know, we don't know. So appreciate this again.
And if I, if I could just really quickly, I'm sitting up here next to Clark, but Katie Galvani in the audience, she's the deputy director. She, she really is the point person for Clark to provide support. You know, we, he knows how to do it. We're just there to try to help him and get him the support that he needs. And Katie's the driver behind that, so I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to Katie.
Well, the Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
Come on.
Thank you, Katie.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I will also put you on the spot with something that I also had a discussion with Director Ewing about. If you have an exhibit opening and there's a reason to create attention to get people to come to the museum to see the new exhibit, having a, using our public comment, just like we do kind of for our animal control, showing off what animals are available for adoption, coming up here, letting us know maybe on this day in history, this is what happened in Lake County, and then letting us know, it would be a great way to advertise and use this as a tool to make the public aware of what is happening.
Absolutely.
We had that conversation, and this is the spur for it. He's already researching the dates. Let's just put it that way. Nice.
Nice. All right, thanks again, and we appreciate your presentation. All right. It looks like we are at 12:00 PM exactly. So I think from that, from that, well, now we're at 12:01. So from that, we will go ahead and take a, take a lunch break and come back at 1:05? Or 1:00? You guys good with 1:05 or 1:00? 1:05, around 1:05 it is. I think we're ready, Sam. All right. Welcome back from the lunch break, and we're going to go ahead and move on to our agenda item 4.1, consideration of, well, we already approved the extra item. But it's a resolution that authorizes the county administrative officer to enter into an agreement with the state of California for the Soda Bay Corridor evacuation route planning and maintenance project. And Scott DeLeon should be here any second to you. On the way as in upstairs? Okay. Yeah.
Do we have a copy?
Do we have a copy of the resolution that we might be able to share the screen with? So.
Yeah, it's, it's on, they uploaded it.
Oh, gotcha. I just need to reload it.
There's an updated one that Johanna has.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Scott DeLeon, Public Works Director. Thank you for taking up this item. This is a resolution that authorizes the county administrative officer to sign the agreement with the state of California for the Soda Bay Corridor evacuation route planning and maintenance project. The, the contract was originally, or was attached to the extra agenda item. I did not make copies of that, but that should, should be available to you. And it requires a resolution specifying who's authorized to sign the agreement. So this resolution simply authorizes the CAO to sign the agreement. And you have a copy of the, copy of the resolution there. And so really what the recommended action is to adopt the resolution that authorizes the county administrative officer to enter into the agreement with the state of California for the Soda Bay Corridor evacuation route planning and maintenance project. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I don't see any questions from anyone on the board. Is there anybody in the chambers or in public comment that would like to comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr.? Oh, just offer the resolution.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Just offer the resolution. You offered?
I did.
Okay. Resolution has been offered.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. So we'll move on to our 7.4, consideration of Task Force Ad hoc Committee to add Article 73 to Chapter 21 of Lake County zoning ordinance to address commercial cannabis permitting activities and enforcement. And this one will be conducted by our Community Development Director, Mary Darby, who should be joining us via Zoom. There she is.
We can see your lips moving, but didn't hear anything.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Perfect. Hello, everyone. Good to see you today. I'm going to present today the proposal for a task force or head, ad hoc committee to add Article 73 to Chapter 21 of the Lake County zoning ordinance to address commercial cannabis permitting activities and enforcement. I would like to start with a video from, that was created from our May 25th and May 26 cannabis workshops. And so if Sam could assist me with playing that, please. Hello, welcome to the cannabis workshops. The hope is that this is going to be interactive, so you can move from table to table to table. And you have a subject matter expert at each table that you can go over different issues or concerns or input. There are in, at each table, you'll see the presentation that we had, we conducted yesterday. You'll have a copy of the ordinance itself, the draft ordinance number one. Thank you, Kim. If you look at Kim, you'll see things that are being held up here. And we also have a sign-in sheet and actual comment cards. So what we're going to do is we divided the table up into six different categories. The categories are Table 1, we're going to be reviewing trees, habitat, energy, and, Table 1's right here, energy and greenhouses. And we have our consultants here, so we have Kim Hunter and Melissa, what shall I say, Melissa? Frosco? Okay, Frosco here at Table 1. And so at every. And so at every table, there will be a different category of issues that we can go over in terms of the cannabis ordinance. I am going to be the general table, so any questions you have about the ordinance in general, you can see me. At this particular table, table one, we also have the Woodland Oaks ordinance that was adopted. And I think at table six, we have the fire safety standards as well. And just table four, thank you. At table two, you have hydrology, the drought management plan, which is here at table two. You have Andrew Amalong. At table three back here, you have Laura Hall and Byron Turner, and they are outreach and recycling, so hydroponics, any type of recycling. At table four, you back here, raise your hand, table four, that's our chief building official. So you'll have fire and life safety standards that you can review with him. At table five, we have code enforcement. We have our code enforcement manager, which is Marcus Beltramo, but we also have our cannabis program code officer, Linda Rosa Bill. So she's at that table to discuss anything, whether or not it's legal cannabis or illegal cannabis, that all can happen at that table. And table six, we've designed for our temporary cannabis events for retail use, if you're interested in any of that, as well as generators.
We were hoping that the county would consider micro businesses on land that has been previously not allowed to have a micro business because of zoning issues for a cultivator. The best case scenario where we can actually have a business that is successful and succeeds is to be able to process, package, and market our own product. It takes the middleman out and essentially keeps the money in the farm where it's needed.
So my question was for weed tours. So I have a cannabis license for retail and delivery. So I know that we cannot sell from the farm, but am I allowed to bring a vehicle, which is approved by the state, to do a live delivery to a private residence, which wouldn't be the canopy, it would be outside the cannabis? Can they consume it at the house or at a designated area? And would they be able to go inside to the cannabis field and take photos, not consumption, photo?
He's been in the process for four years. His brother was one of the first ones at the courthouse when they were only giving 15 permits for the whole county. He's just going to his permit hearing tomorrow.
Oh, wow. Oh, you're a mambacho.
Yeah.
Mambacho.
So for one acre. And we were just talking about if there were thresholds based on the level of impact and the amount of canopy being grown, people might get through the process faster.
Hi, my name is Adam Moody, and what we were talking about today was potentially doing things a little bit quicker by doing them in parallel instead of having them happen consecutively. And we were hoping that we could introduce an at risk waiver and a mod fee addendum that would allow for the risk to sit with the applicant so that we could start putting building permits through before we waited for our license applications to get completed. That way, we weren't basically going through one process only to start another one. Like other businesses, non cannabis businesses, we were hoping we could do those processes in parallel, and that way, we could speed up the total licensing period to operation.
Okay. So go ahead, you should go ahead and tell me what issue you were covering.
Hi, I'm Kristin Callahan, a farmer in Middletown, California, and I am talking with Byron, who I met when I first started my project way back in 2016 or 17, and we're talking about some of the ordinance topics. We're really focused on big picture, like retail and sinking the money back into our Lake County community and how we can build our ordinance around, instead of us moving agriculture out, which is kind of how wineries have been, you know, and they're great because they're giving us jobs and like, we want to do the same thing in cannabis, but cannabis, in the history of our cannabis farmers, we have been the backbone of the underground, the last free market. And so what I want to see happen for cannabis, and my dream for cannabis is to see us taking the money that we can, that we're sending out through distribution, back in collaborative efforts to bring money to our local small businesses.
Hi, so my name is Todd Handler, and my brother Eric and I have recently joined a venture here. And I'd like to echo what Kristin was saying. It's really important that we do support the community in all respects, and certainly having an industry that can promote the labor force that's here and have them be able to participate in the local economy on a regular basis. I guess it's just generally, you know, whatever the county feels we can do to be available to do that.
Right. Awesome, because at the presentation yesterday, I think that we did get a comment, or someone asked, what is the vision of the cannabis and, you know, the cannabis here in Lake County? And I think that with appointing the task force, that's something that definitely should come out, what the vision and goal is of the cannabis.
Yeah. The county ordinance here really only needs to have in it the stuff that's going to be specific to the county, separate from what the state's already requiring. And that'll, I think that'll streamlight this a lot, and it'll also cut down on a lot of confusion within the planning department and between planners and applicants.
Yes. What I would love to see is somebody in the county develop a little spot on the county website that has all your public notices, because right now, I have to either pay for Record B, which I won't, or I have to drive up here to look in the hallway to see if there's something, and it's, you know, an hour and a half round trip. But if you could put all your public notices in one spot, all of us could go see it. It would totally require, fulfill your, you know, your designation to have to tell the public about what's there, and then we would be able to know, you know, straight up front, and it would just make so much more sense.
Do you believe that hoop houses are allowed?
For outdoor.
For outdoor, yes, for outdoor. But if hoop houses also are valuable in keeping moisture, which is what
And protecting.
And protecting the grows and the plants and such, I think that it just should be worded maybe a little better. I wrote some comments about that, but it's, that's one thing. I just wanted to understand if hoop houses were going to be allowed. My understanding, they are not allowed right now, and therefore, they may be considered to be allowed in here. That's my one question. And another big question is, is this new ordinance going to address the NOA from the Water Board date of October 31st, 2020? Is that gate going to open up after that?
Right. Those are excellent questions. They're very good questions. Thank you very much for taking the time to review the video. Those were some of the comments that we did receive at the May 25th and May 26 workshops. We did capture that in the presentation that I would like to present to you right now. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. So the reason I am before you today is to request that you appoint or review the application to appoint or approve a task force for the commercial cannabis permitting activities enforcement for Lake County. In consideration of a proposed task force, we will be addressing stakeholders with concerns in the areas of the community, land use and zoning, and the environment. Recommendations, CDD is making a recommendation for a nine committee member task force. Originally, I understand from our previous meeting that we were proposing seven, possibly nine. So there were areas where there may have been some confusion as to whether or not CDD was recommending a seven member committee or a nine member committee, and I am proposing a nine member committee, and these are my recommendations. One committee member should come from a tribal, the tribal government. One should come from the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. One member should come from a northeast or northwest quadrant of Lake County. One community member should come from the southeast or southwest quadrant of the county. There should be a community organization group member that's appointed to the task force. I believe there should be a member from the planning commission. There should be a member from the agriculture commissioner. The agriculture commissioner should be appointed, and I apologize if that was an error when I submitted my memo. There also should be a law enforcement officer or the code enforcement officer from the roadmap task force appointed to the committee. I do understand that there may be some policy issues as it relates to appointing county employees to advisory committee boards, so that's something that we would need further clarification and discussion. And I'm also recommending a peer reviewer to be appointed to the committee as well, and that could be a consultant from one of the Lake County's consultants' retainment Some of the other members, I think that should be a part of the task force, but not necessarily a part of, appointed, however, but should have input into the recommendations of the task force. It would include 19 various employees. That would include county councils, of course, we would need them to assist us with preparing the regulatory standards. Cal Fire, I'm recommending that too, from a district that we would have to further discuss. I recommend two board of supervisors to be appointed to this committee. Originally, when I started here seven months ago, there was a community development team that had composed of two board of supervisor members, and my recommendation would be to also include two of those members back on the team, but not on the actual task force itself. My recommendation would be to include a university system representative, and my rationale for that particular recommendation is that there are a lot of studies going on at UC universities that are doing research in this particular area, and I think their input would be very valuable to the county. I recommend that the cannabis control officers for the roadmap task force, which would include the sheriff department as well as CDD, be a part of the team. The sheriff, of course, Lake County Sheriff. Cannabis consultants, LACO right now, that are assisting us with writing and preparing our staff reports for proposed cannabis projects. I recommend that the CDD Cannabis Program section staff would be a part of this, this would include Andrew Amalong, our cannabis control program manager, as well as his staff. I recommend that the Department of Public Works, Water Resources Department would appoint someone to be a part of this team, non advisory team, and also someone for the Chamber of Commerce, because I hear a lot of requests for tourism and events, and I think that because the Chamber of Commerce is specialized in that area, that they would make a great team member as well. And I just wanted to go back and just say, in terms of the planning commission, I highly recommend that a planning commissioner or two are appointed to the task force because a lot of the times we bring staff reports before the board for decision making purposes, they are on the front line, and I think that being a part of the discussions behind the scenes and all the issues and challenges that we address during those meetings, it would be valuable to have a team member from the planning commission on the task force. In terms of issues or challenges that should be discussed during the task force, in the first category, underlying use and zoning, and I will admit that I did add this first bullet, cannabis structures requiring a building permit, fire fees, that came from Sabatier from earlier today. So that was just added this earlier today. We'd like to review hoop houses, ADH standards and requirements, setbacks for non cultivation areas, buffers for waterways, exclusion zones, fencing and vegetative screening, and co-location of permits and clustering for review and land use and zoning challenges. In terms of the environment, my recommendation is for regulatory controls to be considered for hydrology, water usage, management plan criteria being added to, energy, renewable energy generators, fire and disaster planning, environmental impacts, and agricultural. This is rather awesome. It should be to the task. In terms of community, my proposal is that we add transportation standards, mitigation of water noise and dust, that we revisit mental background checks, that we include more involvement with tribal consultation groups, and that we look at retail standards that relates to micro businesses and non cultivating projects, also delivery and dispensaries. The other things that I have, that I recommend that we should get are the regulations and ensure that the ordinance is consistent with the Department of Cannabis Control, and that one of the comments in the video stated that if we could place policies on our websites as it relates to our recommendations with staff reports, and that's definitely something we can do without a task force. And also, I have already shared the comments from the May 25th and May 26th workshops with the board of supervisors. In terms of application, the application for a task force member have already been uploaded into Granicus. We have already started receiving some applications, but I just wanted to review the policy for the advisory board, in that no member or any advisory board, commission, or committee shall make, participate in, making or in any way attempt to use their position to influence a decision in which he or she knows or has reason to know that he or she or their spouse has a financial interest. So I just wanted to review the policies. The policies are attached to the application itself. My recommendations for application deadline would be that we could take, accept the applications up until June 16th, and that I can present the application back before the board, the board can make the actual appointment for the task force by July 14th, board of supervisors' hearing, and that our first meeting for the force, for the task force could begin as early as July 21st. And that pretty much concludes my presentation, and I'll take any questions from the board at this time.
Thank you, Mary. Supervisor Pyska.
There's a lot here that wasn't in our board packet, and so I'm not really prepared to have the discussion right now and changing these tactics. I don't know how you feel, but I need some time to think about this. I don't know the difference between a task force and a team and how they work together. You know, I don't understand that. There's been a lot of changes since reviewing the agenda.
Bless you, Scott.
For me, I think we need to be focusing on the task force members. Mary gave us a lot of information, I think it was a lot of extra information, just for our knowledge of what she's wanting to do and move forward. I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think ultimately, we just need to make the decision that we want to have a task force and what that task force is going to look like, the makeup of it, and do we agree with what she's laid out here, what those nine members need to look like. I think that's what we really need to agree on today so we can start taking applications and get that process moving. I think that's the most important thing today.
Supervisor Swatier.
Yeah, no, I'm going to focus on the task force, because I think that there's always the ability to get feedback from certain departments, such as our sheriff or code enforcement, things like that. And so I think there's always going to be some review mechanisms or the ability for input to come to us. I'd like to simplify a lot of it. I appreciate the idea of getting a planning commissioners involved, but I know that, to me, that that might be asking a lot from a planning commissioner. I know that there's already quite a bit on their plate, and the review of this will eventually get to them as well before it's finalized. In my mind, I, just to simplify things, I think that having an even keel lobbyist, so Lake County Cannabis Alliance and the Farm Bureau, I think that makes it a balanced approach. Having the ag commissioner, just because we are talking about ag, and we need to make sure that we look at this from a, in my opinion, look at this from the perspective of how does ag work. But having all of the other positions, I think that is not necessary, other than maybe having two supervisors on there, but even that, I'm, I think those three positions are the only really key ones, and then the rest is just conversations to bring the information to the committee. This is, I want to make sure that we're moving forward and not starting from scratch, and also not looking at this as if it's a, because again, the invitation to the sheriff, I think that we can have a conversation, but having a sheriff member seat, I think that that's not necessary. I think that's, it's a commercial activity that is legally allowed here in the state of California. There's specific rules and regulations, and I think that we just need to make sure that what we create is reviewed by those departments and then input. what we create is reviewed by those departments, and then input provided, but not necessarily having to have them as a member of the task force. So I would say five is what I'm offering.
Instead of nine?
Yeah.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't, I don't think the number, the nine number's off, it's just, like we said, focusing on who needs to be, I definitely agree with the Farm Bureau being an opportunity there. I know that Director Darby, you mentioned someone from Department of Cannabis Control. Can you remind me who, who you were thinking on that, or is that just a label? I thought you had mentioned something in the past, that someone had worked for Department of Cannabis Control that might be interested in it.
In terms of the DCC, we did have a representative that's interested in helping us develop our ordinance to be specifically designed for Lake County.
All right, thank you. And, you know, I, I just have a different opinion, I, I think a planning commission being on this is, is a good recommendation, so I'm good with the nine, and, and I would agree with, like you said, maybe law enforcement and taking law enforcement out and just be code enforcement there, because they're going to be probably the initial ones first dealing with all this. So I like the nine number, but adding the Farm Bureau, and where were you potentially, so we have a community member?
So we would actually have three different community members, so if you look at the, oh, you're not looking at my screen anymore. So I have a community member that's going to represent the northeast and northwest quadrants, and then one for the southeast, southeast and southwest quadrants, and then I was, I added a community organization group as a member, so you would have like three actual community members as a part of the task force.
Maybe instead of that third action group, maybe it's the Farm Bureau that we need to have in that seat?
I definitely think the Farm Bureau needs to be on there.
Can we, can you put that slide back up?
Yes, ma'am.
Go again, see, please, thanks.
Can you see it?
Not yet.
Oh, yeah, it'll come up.
Okay.
It's loading.
And I think we have to remind the public too, that even though we may pick this nine-member team, this is open to the public, right? This conversation will be open for anybody to, to engage.
Yes, absolutely, these, all the meetings will be zoomed. Even the team that I'm recommending that review the recommendations of the task force, I added that team, because when the first draft of the ordinance was prepared, I was not authorized to release the ordinance until it was reviewed by the board of supervisors. I would like to have the opportunity to receive input for some of the other county employees prior to providing comments back and forth to the task force or to the board of supervisors.
So my, so we've got, on this nine-member list, the only staff, oh, we have the ag commissioner, we have planning commissioner, and we have code enforcement. So how do the other department heads, like Water Resources and the rest of CDD, interact with this group?
So they won't necessarily interact with this group directly. From CD, from CDD's point of view, we would actually send out the recommendations to the task force, to the other team, operating, other department heads and the team, the second team that I listed, for just reviewing and input from the recommendations from the task force.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I'll add back in, I appreciate the comments from Supervisor Simon, I made a mistake, and yes, I think having a public member and providing the input from a public perspective i- is going to be important as well. And I'm okay with, if there's a planning commissioner on there, I was just being cautious for the fact that they do get paid for the specific meetings they get to, and they wouldn't be paid for the meetings that we're asking them to be a part of here, so that's why I was being cautious. But I, I, I think their perspective is also going to be necessary, but I think that, I, I agree with the comment made by Director Darby about interaction with the water resources. I just think it gets really complicated when you have too many people on the list, but it's very available to have that level of communication with any and all departments to get their feedback as we progress through the revision.
I have another comment. Is there a way, this question's for Anita. I know she's trying to make sure that we have community members from all sections or two sections of our community. Is there a way we can say that we would like to have somebody from the northeast and somebody from the southeast, like recommend it, but if we're unable to fill those community positions in those certain areas, we can fill that community position with another address, so we can keep that a little bit open? Because I think sometimes I get concerned when we make it too small for a community to get involved, we don't get the proper applications, and then that spot is vacant.
I, I think that you can address it from an, you know, if possible type of scenario. It appears here what you're looking for are just community members without any particular affinity for or against locations, et cetera, just kind of members at large, but from particular locations. So I think you can, if it is possible.
I, I would, I would like to see that, just so we don't have a vacant spot.
So if we're looking at this list, and we're adding two board of supervisor members, and we're also adding the Farm Bureau, then?
I don't, they're adding the board of supervisors to this?
We're not this list, so it's going to be the working or the other team?
Yes. It would be, yes. So the, the other team would not actually have a vote in the task force, it would only be a task force group. I can put the other list up as well, if you like.
And then I was actually looking at number five, the community organization group, instead of being that, being the Farm Bureau, changing that, so it's, it's them.
I would agree, yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay.
And then when you took away the northeast and northwest, your comment would be?
But we only have two on that, Mary, so hold on.
Two community members, right? That's what you're looking for in three and four?
Two community members.
It would just say two community members, right?
Well, I would like to see if we couldn't get that, but have it open where this is what we would like, but if we don't get that, then it's, you know. But I don't know if I have a third person willing to change that farm.
Yeah, yeah.
And I've already stated the Farm Bureau.
And so then number eight is code enforcement only?
I wanted both. My, my list is somewhat similar.
I guess you could keep it open, and we can decide when it comes to us.
I think, I think, of course, you got tribal government, I agree with that. Where it says Cannabis Alliance, I'd like to see cannabis industry focusing on cultivation, cannabis industry focusing on processing, non-cultivation, community member North Shore, community member South Shore, or however quadrant, law and code enforcement, environmental organization weighted on biological, biological aspects, agricultural, such as the Farm Bureau, vineyard owner or farmer, and then the consultant, I think it's the same, it's just different name that I have weighted on water hydraulical.
So what's the number that you're looking at for a board?
I have nine or ten, because of the code enforcement and law enforcement split.
But you broke up the number two to like four different?
Just two. It's, so I did, instead of having Cannabis Alliance, I have Cannabis Industry, cultivation and process, processing, and then, so it is, I think it is eleven, because I added code enforcement and law enforcement, but I, but.
I guess I get concerned when it gets too big, and then we have a hard time getting everybody to be able to, with their calendars, get someplace, that's.
So I had had that thought too, on cultivation and processing, but I'm hoping that just the Cannabis Alliance representative can speak to all of those and, and have that background.
Because what you're going to get, and what you're going to get with community members is the loudest anti-person, that's what's going to happen, so we need to have a balance. I would like to see four community members, pro and anti. I mean, I, I'm all, I, I know what you mean about too many people, but for me, I like having a balanced effort of voices and not kind of stacking it either way. I know we're not trying to do that, but sometimes the applications will come that way, and, that's just my opinion, though. And I think I'm the only one that wants a lot more, so.
Everyone's else scratching off, you're adding.
I like a smaller board to make sure we can get a quorum to be able to have a meeting. Because that's what things could extend.
Susan?
Susan, yes.
May I ask a clarifying question? Because looking at the title on this agenda, it says consideration of task force slash and/or, I'm assuming you meant and/or ad hoc committee. Is this team a task force, or is this team the ad hoc committee?
So the, my, my recommendation is that it's a task force. However, in-house, I've been using, I've been seeing the terminology ad hoc. So when I slash, that means and, like, it's all one and one terminology, but if we only had to use one terminology, I would use task force or ad hoc, one or the other, but it's not two separate entities.
So, if I may, I understand what task force, ad hoc. Ad hoc is, is just, just truly a descriptor that goes to duration, and ad hoc is for a particular purpose. Once its goal of that particular purpose is achieved, then the ad hoc committee dissolves. So that's the point of ad hoc. And I'm sorry to be dim, but I'm, I'm lost as to is team different? So team is something else entirely. Okay, just so that everyone knows, you've got, I, I'm, you've got two essentially competing groups, or, and the only one that's on the agenda is the ad hoc task force. So if you're going to do a team, you'll have to take that up and populate it unfortunately at another time, because it's not on the agenda item, but, but the other part of this is that an ad hoc is going to have to be Brown Act compliant if it's populated by members of the public, and in both cases, these will both be, so, which is fine, I mean, it's good to have public involvement, I'm just wanting to make sure that you understand, it doesn't matter what you call it.
Thank you. So my, my strategy and logistics for these meetings, they will be Brown Act compliant. Every meeting will, will have a Zoom component to it, so the public could comment and be a part of the meetings. The meetings would actually take place where public comments could be taken at the beginning of the group hearing, meeting, as well as the end, and I am looking into possibly if there would be another spot during the middle of our conversations where the community would be able to comment.
So I, I see the way it's written right now is that the cannabis industry has only one seat, and the agricultural, with the ag and the Farm Bureau, there's two seats, and then two members of the public, so I, I feel like we need to leverage the experience of our industry more by having a little bit more participation.
Right, I think that's why I wanted to see from, yeah. Because I think the specialized are going to be the folks like the environmental organizations, they're, they're going to look at it from the view of whatever's biological aspects, and at sometimes, you know, they have their own specific goal at hand. Tribal governments will be focused on cultural aspects, water, hydrology, but when it comes to the others, there's also, that's their livelihood, so naturally.
Right, and they've got the experience of the last several years.
So then my question would be, instead of having a peer review, a consultant from the Lake County hydrologist list, instead of having them have a seat on the board, just having them there to help direct instead of having a seat, have a voice?
Well, maybe they would be on the team side of it, or?
Be available for?
Yeah, I, I think that's the seat that we could change, and maybe we have Cannabis Alliance, and then we have an, an industry at large seat that's available, and, and then we've got two mem, two members giving their experience to this group, so it's not just one perspective.
I like that.
So we change number nine from peer review to, what was your suggestion language?
Cannabis industry.
Cannabis industry.
And then hopefully, the person from the alliance and the industry have a different background.
And maybe we should make that known on when, when they fill out their applications, to really let us know what side of the industry you're on, what knowledge you have, so we can make that proper decision.
I'm good.
I'm good with that, yeah.
So I'm not hearing any other comments, so I'll open it up for, well, Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll just make my final comments. With the status of where the industry has gone to, where we are today, the amount of people we're looking to incorporate in this, and the amount of time spent to make this happen, I, I, I think it's gotten overly complicated for something in my mind, and I don't know that we all agree on that, but it's, it's just not that complicated. I just think it's, it's too much for, for what needs to happen. So I, I just, I'm, I'm kind of looking back, granted, the industry failed as well, so maybe we failed at doing our ordinance, but we had a very small group that worked on the hemp ordinance, came back with the hemp ordinance and made it happen, and was able to work through that, and it was a very small group, I believe there was only five people on there. And we were able to bring back some recommendations by having it reviewed by all, and I just think this is, looking at it from a very complex perspective, and a lot of time put into something that I'm not sure if we were completely wide open how many new applications would be coming in right now. So that's my only concern, is the amount of effort and work put into this and asking people to take part in this, when I'm, it, it just, it's, it's a completely different environment than it was, and yes, we do need to make some updates to this, but I just think this is a complicated way of go, of doing it.
All right, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? I'll open it up for public input.
Brian Martin, Lake County Sheriff. I would start out by commending Director Darby, this is quite a task, she's been very proactive in her approach, and this is one of those issues where no matter what you do, you'll never make everybody happy, and it's extremely complicated, so kudos to her for taking this on and being so proactive. As far as having participation of law enforcement, I, I don't know if it's the most appropriate thing to do for a couple reasons. The first reason being that this industry is still, has people in it that aren't really comfortable with law enforcement, and for this to be effective, I think you need a lot of public participation. I think going into a room and discussing your business details with law enforcement present in the room, knowing that we continue to have an obligation to take enforcement action when we're aware of a conduct that might run afoul of the law, might dissuade some people from getting, from participating in a way that would lead to meaningful resolutions or outcomes for this. The other reason is, i- if we're going to participate in our capacity as law enforcement or my capacity as the sheriff, and somebody takes some action based on what they heard from one of these meetings, and it turns out it runs afoul of the law in some other manner, puts us really in a weird situation. Despite the legality within California, some of the, the product that's grown in California ends up making its way out of state, and to, to put us in a position as law enforcement to say that we participated in discussions and told people how to do this, and they resulted, it resulted in them getting arrested somewhere else, or running afoul of laws right here in California, kind of puts us in a really awkward position. So I, I appreciate the invitation, I appreciate the consideration, I don't know that I would accept the invitation, so that might help address some of the members of the people on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Martin. Richard Durham, thank you. So, three minutes is going to be really tough. I don't know where everybody's been, but I spent three years hammering out Article 72. We don't need 73. It's written horribly. If I was a teacher, I would flunk the student who wrote it.
If I was a teacher, I would flunk the student who wrote it. And I'll leave that alone. As far as the ad hoc committee, there's outdoor grow, mixed light, greenhouse, and indoor. We can't leave those people out. They each are going to have something to say about this. And I would recommend that we just go back to 72 and fix whatever we don't like. I mean, we don't need a whole new, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. We already have it. I mean, I'm compliant. So are a lot of other farms. So what, what you're saying by 73 is that we're not compliant. Or, I mean, we are. And there's things like, you know, the background check we don't like. There's other things, you know, that we can just work on those. And as far as the limiting the industry to one or two people in the discussion, I have a complete different style of growing than my neighbor. And for them not be able to come in and me to be able to make my points, it's just, it's not helping the industry. You're satisfying some bureaucracy. So I think we already have rules. If there's some that need to be changed, I'm all for it. And that you can use this committee to do that. But, you know, there's stuff in there where all outdoor grows must be fully enclosed. I mean, who would write that? And who would leave it in the, you know, in the final version? You know, if you read through it, you'll realize it's just worked. You know, we should just go back to 72, fix what we don't like and move on. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. Chair Crandall, Vice Chair Scott, Supervisors. Erin McCarrick, Clear Lake, Vice President of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. And I thank you, thank you to the Community Development Department for Director Darby, for everybody who's worked on this, everybody who came to the, are they? The community visioning sessions, the feedback sessions. It was a clever way to get feedback, so appreciate that. Just echoing the same thing that has been discussed here, that there definitely should be more than one LCCA and/or cannabis industry representative on this. I'm a distributor and my perspective is wildly different than a cultivator, than a dispensary, than a processor. There's things that when you look at the ordinance at the state level, at the county level, that just unless you do it every day, you don't even know the regulations that affect you. So it's super important to have that. I don't, our industry doesn't necessarily have a preference on law enforcement on there. So whatever works. And I didn't even think about the liability factor, but that might be an issue. Another issue that may be with the number nine, the hydrologist, is potentially conflict of interest. Like, everybody on here is going to have an agenda coming into the ad hoc committee. And as we've seen with some of the appeals and some of the Planning Commission hearings, every hydrologist is different and every hydrologist may be working for a farm or something. So maybe this is a way for Director Darby's academia to enter, to come into this conversation is maybe there's somebody in the academic water world who has not consulted for a farm that could be number nine. If you'd like, I did one through nine. And you can also knock off the bottom two if you just want one through seven. Something that could work for us could be tribal, LCCA one, LCCA two, community member one, community member two, Farm Bureau slash Ag, Planning Commission, that's seven. And then Board of Supervisors and Hydro slash Academia if that's of interest. The thing with having somebody from the Farm Bureau and somebody from the Ag Department is as of now, we are still not necessarily declared Ag. Depends on who you talk to. It's vague. Some places we are Ag, some places we aren't. But in, we do not fall under the jurisdiction of the Ag Department in Lake County. And the Farm Bureau, people have, the cannabis industry had tried to join it. People in the cannabis industry have tried to join the Farm Bureau and have not been accepted. So there's a bit of inherent bias there. And as Chair Crandall said, the community members may be vocally against it, I'm not sure, right? So the deck would be a little stacked if there was a bunch of Ag and a bunch of community members out there in terms of conversation, right? We want to have a balanced conversation and, yeah. So thank you so much, everybody, for your work. And that is the feedback from LCCA and me.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. And Ms. Darby, thank you very much for putting on the work into a huge task. I'm going to try and stay pointed about the things that I want to bring forward. I think, you know, without going too far or too far away from our conversation, I feel like we're making mountains out of molehills. I think that the county and the people here have spent a huge amount of time creating Article 72 to begin with. To see that completely scrapped is really sad, especially for the people that participated in it. I think that we could streamline things if we could focus on what we're trying to get done, which is create regulations that are workable and functionable, not just people's opinions. We're trying to find how do we put these things into play? So if we looked at the aspect of cannabis as an agricultural crop, and then we look to the state as far as how those things are distinguished, defined, and ultimately processed through the law, I think that we would keep ourselves from having to rewrite our entire ordinance. And I'm not sure where we got to the point where we were just completely throwing out Article 72 and the years of time and effort that went into that. I remember a number of you guys were there for all of that, right? And so to see that completely go away seems just a huge loss, you know, monetarily, not to mention the time. And the whole idea of all of this was to get to a point where we could streamline our processes so that we could process more applications, so we could bring up the economy of our county. And the idea of us doing that in a fashion that is about bringing more legal cannabis to the forefront was the whole point and purpose, I think, of us taking a look at the law or the Article 72 to begin with. And it seems like instead of us processing more permits, we've actually processed far less if you utilize the time and staff to rewrite the entire ordinance into now 73. So instead of processing more, we've processed less. Instead of streamlining it, we've covered it in red tape. I don't see how we're actually moving towards what I think all of us had talked about to begin with. And so with that, none of that is to be rude and I, I, and I try not to really base that just on my opinion. I'm just trying to look at what's happened and what has been going on. And so with that, I mean, no disrespect to Ms. Darby and, and anybody else involved in any of this. I'm just trying to really understand how we got to this point, you know? How did we wind up back here when the whole point of all of it, I thought, was to move forward? So instead of processing permits, we've slowed down permits. Instead of making it easier, we strung up more red tape. I'll leave that alone. However, the ad hoc committee comes together. Ad hocs are good. They've used them and focused them balancefully. Thank you. Thank you. It looks like we have a hand up from phone number 6205. If you can unmute.
Hello, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much. This is Bart Levinson. I am not hearing the voice of the people who live here represented in these meetings and in this room. And I'm not hearing from you, the supervisors, the voices of the people that you've heard from for years now coming to your town halls who have had a lot to say about how their quality of life has been impacted and their concerns about the additional fire risk that the growing industry brings to the county, the road degradation, and the issues of wells going dry and drought. And I'd like to see that the town halls that have heard the years of testimony and experience of the citizens already here be somehow included so that what you, what you arrive at is what I think you're intending, which is bringing the industry into the county in a sustainable way that the county can actually manage, it can grow, and the citizens who live here feel good about living here with it. So I'm asking each of you supervisors, please, to speak up and say something about your town halls and make sure that the people from each of your town halls are represented on this task force. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I can speak from my town hall. This is not an issue that we've been discussing. And on the task force, we have two seats for community members. So I think-
And we have public members who have spoken today who have lived here for a very long time. And so not sure how we're not hearing from our community.
And I think we have to remember we heard from our, our community when this was voted on and that's why we're here, because the community voted to make this legal in Lake County and that's why we're, we're moving forward, trying to develop something that works.
All right, it looks like we have another hand up from Betsy Khan. If you can unmute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. You know, I have a completely different perspective on this, as you can imagine. My concern is that we've created a specialized kind of a permitting process that deviates from the basic SEQA system. The traditional permitting process for major use permits requires that the initial study include an analysis from the Department of Water Resources. If the Department of Water Resources is not capable of providing the level of analysis that you need, then I think it's that department's responsibility to identify the kind of qualified consulting service or specialization that would enable us to protect our natural resources. The Agricultural Natural Resources Service from UC Davis might be able to help us with this. But I really hate turning it into this kind of a little, a little local, you know, competition. And I agree with a lot of the things that Ms. Levinson said about the fire and, you know, other related issues. I'm not seeing that the SEQA process is really the basis of our understanding, right? I hear all the competition, but I'd like to see it handled in a straightforward fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Smith.
Good afternoon. This is Jennifer Smith, President of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance. We, the industry, have advocated for a long time to, sorry, to streamline the application process and align more with state policy. I think doing this through the ad hoc committee is the best way to do it because since we've written Article 72, the state has implemented regulations as well as they've changed those regulations. And I think the more that we can align and streamline the process is the actual goal of this. I don't want to see this get bogged down in committee. I want it, I want this to be functional and moving forward. Therefore, people that this affects in terms of its application should definitely, you know, be involved and have more than one seat. Long-term personal goal would be to be in the Department of Ag. I think this notion that we're not agriculture because of commercial transactions has got to be figured out, both at the local and state level. But there are things in agriculture that apply to us that we should be able to take advantage of, i.e. ag exempt buildings. You know, a building's a building. It doesn't matter what the crop is that it's protecting. And I think that this is the task force where we can flush some of this stuff out. While I appreciate a lot of agencies and other departments being involved, I'm not so sure they need to be involved in the day-to-day operation of an ad hoc committee. I think that they should be consulted and their opinions brought back in. And I think that that, taking that perspective, might streamline this list a little bit. But this is definite, well, it's just one way. It's definitely an important feature to have views from the community. But this, if the end goal is to create regulations, whether it's a revision or a new regulation, we're not going to get bogged, we should not be getting bogged down in the, should cannabis be here, right? Like, the toothpaste is already out of the tube. And so I think if we have non-industry representation, that that needs to be very clear. We're here to regulate. We're here to have safe environmental practices. The state regulates those safe environmental practices. We adhere to Water Board standards and we adhere to Department of Pesticides. So let's let the state do their job. Let's let the county have a zoning ordinance and let's build that ordinance in this ad hoc. And let's be proactive to regulate the industry, but not regulate how we farm. Let's have an application process streamlined. I'm a little passionate about this. Not very well spoken today, but I hope that we can get this down to, you know, at maximum seven members because we're going to have a real hard time getting a quorum of many more. Thanks.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else with any hands up, so I will, if there is, yes, come back up and state your name for the record and-
Erin McCarrick, Clear Lake. Just 30 seconds. I was driving in, so I was on Zoom, so I might have missed it. Are you guys deciding today what the, like, timeline is for the application? Does that happen today? Just wondering.
Yes, go, go ahead, Johanna.
So I suggest that we do the application deadline on the 15th instead of the 16th because I was planning on posting on Thursday. So unless you want me to post on Friday, I think it should be the 15th rather than the 16th.
Would that be an issue, Ms. Darby?
We can't hear it.
They're on mute, I think.
And I think she had us for July 15th for the selection. So the closing was in June. And so it wouldn't be on the agenda.
So, I'm sorry, my, my dates are off. The appointment of the task force, I think my conversation with Johanna was the 21st. It's, that's, that's the error. We were actually, that would give like a week. I think we calculated a week and some days for that. These dates.
So the application deadline would be June 15th and then it would be back on the board agenda for the 21st of June for appointment.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's, okay, it says July, right? And that's where it was, okay. Got it. All right. So applications to be received and then the 15th would be the date, right? And then the 21st would be?
The 21st of June.
Yes, 21st of June, okay. Does that cover that? Are you guys on the same page?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. And so with that, I don't see any other public comments, so I will, I will close it and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Pisca.
So just, when we started having these conversations a year ago, the intent was to streamline the process. And we've heard that in several comments today. And I think that, for me, is the biggest priority. And I, I don't know if that's everyone's main priority here is to just take, you know, we have something, we want to make it better, we want to, we want it streamlined. And so I think defining the task for this task force is really important. And when I'm looking at the composition, we do have code enforcement up there, but code enforcement is under CDD and CDD is running this task force. So I think that's one that we could eliminate because they're already going to be there with staff. Trying to remember, who else is on there? If we can somehow just get it down to seven?
And so-
Is that where we're at? We were at nine?
We were at nine, yeah.
Yeah, can you, Mary-
Is it not showing? Let me share again. I'm sorry.
There you go.
So we're going to have code enforcement participating through CDD. So I think that number eight could go away, if you all agree with me.
Oops, you got rid of Agricultural Commissioner.
That's the second.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah. So, and Erin had suggested cannabis industry one, cannabis industry two, community member one, community member two.
Farm Bureau and Ag Commissioner.
And then that doesn't give us an even amount, but it brings the number down a little bit.
Ag County, the Cannabis Alliance two, for that one, number two.
Well, we had, we had industry one and industry two, and hopefully one of them would be Cannabis Alliance, I think. But then if we want accurate representation from the industry, then maybe we need three, because we have cultivation, distribution, and retail, right? Those are three really different components that we're trying to work on.
In my opinion, the Cannabis Alliance represents all of the above. People who are involved in every aspect of the industry, the public, which means anyone from the industry, no matter what your license type is, is eligible to come and provide a three-minute comment or whatever that public comment time will be. And I think that's the job of why we're inviting the Lake County Cannabis Alliance, because they have the ability to be the spokesperson for any of those license types in order to sit down and figure out what the needs are. And I agree that part of this process was for streamlining, but I think that there are some issues with the ordinance as well, that while we're doing this, we can clean it up some. We've learned a lot as we've gone through some appeal processes and things like that. So I think that we shouldn't take what we've learned over the course of the last, I want to say, year and a half or two years since the last big revision, in order to make those changes happen, rather than streamlining it and still having those issues remain within the ordinance, so.
Well, streamlining and making it better.
Yeah.
That's what I said. So, the both of those things.
Yeah. But I think that there's so many license types. I mean, I think there's 13, 14. I'd hate to see one position for each one. I really think that is the job of the Farm Bureau. It doesn't matter if you are growing wheat, if you're growing pears, if you're growing grapes, you're able to represent that industry as a whole. That is my expectation of the Lake County Cannabis Alliance.
Okay, so two from the industry, two from the community, Farm Bureau, Ag. And then do we need a planning commissioner? I mean, I think it's probably-
That's the one I would say. If we're trying to get to seven, then, so we pull off the planning commission, I would be in favor of that, and the Ag Commissioner in there. I would say you either pull that one off or add two planning commissioners, so you have, and I don't know how we're choosing the folks that we're picking, but I know for me, if I choose a planning commissioner, I'm going to look at their voting record and see which one's more pro and anti, and put point one of each.
Well, I would hope that we all look for a balanced approach, rather than one side or the other. And just want to speak real quick about the Agricultural Commissioner. To me, our Agricultural Commissioner is a neutral party in this. They have a large portion of the Farm Bureau, and they also have a large portion of what cannabis is. It's a plant that is grown in the ground, and they have knowledge of what is the processes and what is available through law and code that both can utilize. So I see the Ag Commissioner as the equalizer for that, and the Farm Bureau and the Cannabis Alliance being equal. So I think it would be even easier to just provide one spot for the Cannabis Alliance, rather than two. I just think smaller is better and it's more efficient.
Well, then I would say one community member, then.
Yes.
I don't agree with one community.
No, I think you need to keep two community. I think we need to keep the tribal, the Cannabis Alliance, two community members, farm, agriculture, and another from the cannabis industry.
I'm just concerned about having a majority of community members if you've got one representative from each. So if we kept the way it is here, but we took off the planning commissioner, then we're at seven, and then we've got-
And I don't think that the DCC should be a voting member. Absolutely an invited guest to be a expert, to provide information. I love the fact they want to be involved, but they should not be voting for our local ordinance.
Right.
I'm good with it set up that way, right there with those seven.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good, too. So, then what is the, what is the task of the task force? I think we should have kind of a united-
She laid it out a little bit.
Right.
Number of task members-
Do you have a slide on that, Mary?
Review, discuss, consider, and develop guidelines for regulatory solutions surrounding commercial cannabis concerns in the following areas, and then it goes through the three items.
Land use, environment, and community, and then she broke those down.
Okay.
So- Supervisor Simon, go ahead. So I think directly to your point, the question is, are we streamlining 72 or creating 73? That's what you're asking right now, right?
Well, I think, I think that one is not as simple as that, because I think pulling it out of 72 and making it easier for people to access, rather than scrolling through 300 pages of Article 72, so you could just carbon copy what's in 72 for cannabis and put it in Article 73 to at least make it easier to find and access, and then tweak what is now Article 73. So I think 72 and 73 could be the exact same thing, but we're looking for streamlined for processing. I mean, not just for the industry, but for our staff, to not have to go through so much process-
Right.
-when some of that process could be done by the state or is unnecessary for us to do. And also, looking at fixing some of the things that need to be fixed, and-
And I think those pain points need to be identified, too, before you get too far into the weeds. Like, what is it that needs to be fixed? Like, yes, we need to streamline. Yes, there's a lot of good work here, but what exactly are those, those issues that have been causing everybody pain, our department pain? And, you know, what is it that's not work, that's not working? And identify those kind of right off the bat, so then you know what work you have to do.
Kind of did that, though.
Well, I'm sorry, Supervisor. So what I've identified in the one, two, and three, the three different categories, those are the issues that I've heard the most, or comments that I received from, or comments I received from the workshops. So like, if you have here the land use and zoning, you'll see hoop houses are concerned, the setbacks are concerned, buffers, exclusion zones, fencing, and permitting. Those are some of the highlights of the issues that we've been receiving for that particular category. And then under the environment, of course, water usage, the drought management plan criteria, fire, environment, energy, and agricultural standards.
And if I can interrupt, I think that, yes, streamlining, but if we say fix and we only say specific things to fix, I think we're restricting the ability of the committee to truly make substantial change that will affect in a positive way.
Right.
So I think that I like what's lined out right now, and I think that even that should be limited. And let's see what the committee comes back with. But our goal is to enhance-
Yeah.
-and streamline in protecting the industry and protecting our communities, and being more efficient in our processing of these applications. That's what I would say is just the main goal. The more specific we get, the more restrictive the committee is from actually making the changes that might need to be made.
Fully agree with that statement.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm fine with what the result is of the composition of the committee itself. I think that was, I think that works.
Yep.
All right.
But a very tall task, the whole thing, as a whole. There's a lot of passionate people on all sides of this. And Director Darby, I thank you very much for taking on this task.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll have to say, I'm a little concerned about the comment about people wanting to join the Farm Bureau and their applications being denied. I just wanted to put that out there.
Some things take a little bit more time than others.
Still concerned. That's wrong.
Oh, from that video? All right, is there any other, you have your pen up?
It was serving it.
So we have the makeup, instead of nine, it's seven, and then the laid-out goals, like you mentioned, that basically had a consensus. I think we should just approve the task force.
Yeah.
Right? That's where we're going. We're not adding, we're not adding any limitations. We're just approving the task force.
I agree. Just approving the task force.
Okay.
And the direction.
Which was?
On the slides-
Okay.
-that she's prepared.
I think only on our agendas we're able to approve the task force, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what we're doing today. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve. Oh, I didn't see a pen.
Go ahead, man. You started. Go ahead.
It was hiding behind his second laptop.
That's right.
I move to approve the current composition, as shown on the screen, for the revision of the cannabis ordinance.
Second. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that, Ms. Darby, and thank you, everybody, for coming for that item. We will, it's laid out to, for the 15th, and that will be the date when everybody accumulates the applications, and then-
Submit your apps.
Thank you, Johanna, for that input as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Prudential, you had a 5.6, right?
Yes.
Approve agreement, I'll go to 5.6. Approve agreement between County of Lake Crisis Support Services of Alameda County for after-hours crisis support services for fiscal years '22, '23, '23, '24, '24, '25, in the amount of $252,000, and authorize the board chair to sign. And so, did you want me to just give the four to you first, so we can?
I can provide my reasons for pulling, if you'd like.
There you go.
So the reason I pulled this item is twofold. One is the $252,000 matches perfectly. If you look at it as $7,000 per month, within the document from Alameda County, it said that there would be an annual increase of 3.5%. So that was one of my concerns, that the 252 doesn't quite cover the three years. But then my other concern is, our RFP process is, if we get more than one bid, which here we got two, which I appreciate that Director Metcalf sent me the other one, and agree with the decision as to going with Alameda, but I appreciated the extra information, that if you get more than one bid, that you're supposed to rebid annually. That was our purchasing ordinance that we had approved, and so I'm looking to approve this for a single year, rather than a three-year, which, in a sense, would also resolve the amount potential issue. And that was it.
Todd, did you have anything to add to that?
Well, Supervisor Spatia just stole all my thunder. That was exactly what I was going, I mean, it makes total sense. If we can, really what I'm asking here is, can we still just please approve this agreement? We'll amend it, amend it to be a one-year agreement, we'll adjust the dollar amount. That would, that would take care of those rate increases that Supervisor Spatia mentioned. And of course, our apologies that we overlooked that part of the, of the RFP policy. And so if this agreement could be approved today, of course, we'll go out to bid again for the next fiscal year. But it looks like if we just adjust the time period from a multi-year to a one-year contract and adjust the dollar amount, we should be okay.
All right.
And just want to add, I appreciated seeing that the other bid came from a local resource that is utilized by Mendocino County for the same service, and I'm hoping that at one point in the future, as we continue to rebid this, that they might get closer to something that Alameda County is offering us. I'm not quite sure how Alameda County affords what they do. It was down to like $11 an hour or something like that, so I'm not quite sure how that works, but I believe it was RCS, and just appreciate that they submitted a bid, and happy to see that we're getting multiple bids on these things, not just a single one or none.
And as you know, I mean, we also contract with RCS for many other programs and services, and it was a tough decision, but Supervisor Spatia, as you pointed out, it did kind of come down to the quality of the service that we've been getting, and also just dollars and cents.
But Vice Chair Scott, you have yours up, and then I'll come back to you.
The only question I have is, does this 24/7 access to after-hours support, does this include the FERC hotline number that's state mandated?
I believe so, but you know what? That's a good question, Supervisor Scott.
Because that's not working here in Lake County at this point.
Yeah. I'll have to double-check that. I'm pretty sure it does, but I could be mistaken.
If we could double-check on that and just let me know.
Yes. Absolutely.
And just wanted to add, we do have, and Supervisor Simon, I know you changed this on our purchasing ordinance. We changed the amount for local bids.
Yeah.
Then we changed the percentage, but I know, I don't know if RCS-
I think we changed the percentage, from what I understand.
Yeah, I don't remember the specific, but there is a local reduction of, if we get a bid and it's a little bit above an out-of-county or an out-of-area bid, that it has the ability to compete with a 10% or 15%. I know we changed it, but-
We changed it, we made it so it was-
And I don't know if RCS meets that, but I just wanted you to be aware, just in case that something like that comes up, because going local is always a better option if we can.
Absolutely. Is that in the-
It is in the purchasing ordinance.
-anywhere? Because I don't recall, I don't believe I knew that.
I think it's in a different section than the bidding process. It talks about local bidding or local support.
Or contractors.
Yeah. I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
I'll send it to you. I'll find it.
Thank you, Supervisor Spatia.
All right. I don't see any other comments, so open it up to the public on Zoom. And I'm not seeing anybody raise their hands, and so I'll bring it back to the board for action.
And I just want to make sure with Director Metcalf, if I make a motion for '22, '23 for $84,000, that is the correct amount for that year?
That is correct, because the 3.5% increases didn't, don't go into effect until-
'23, '24.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're good with that.
Just wanted to make sure we didn't have to force you to come back. So I move to approve-
I love being here.
I move to approve the agreement between County of Lake and Crisis Support Services of Alameda County for after-hours crisis support services for fiscal year '22, '23, in the amount of $84,000, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Director Metcalf.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That was a little messy, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. 7.6, discussion and consideration of administration of the jail medical contract. And with that, we have Sheriff Martin here.
Bringing this agenda item to the Board of Supervisors to outline some goings-on that's been going on surrounding this contract, and to request some direction be provided to county staff. As you know, the jail medical services have been provided at the county jail by way of contract since 1995. I found the agenda item from December of 1995, during which the Health Department requested the contract be in place to provide jail medical services. Prior to that, it appears that jail medical services were provided by county staff, with the public health officer acting as the responsible physician, and public health nursing staff being tasked with the job of clinical services out there. We have a legal obligation to provide county medical services to our incarcerated population, and those costs are borne by the county, the laws surrounding that, in addition to a whole bunch of case law decisions that have come down, but include Title 15 of the California Code of Regulations and Penal Code Section 4023. Shortly after the Health Services Director was appointed to his position, myself and members of the jail command staff met with him in January to discuss several things. One of those things was discuss this contract, this very contract- One of those things was discuss this contract, this very contract, because we were aware that the contract was set to expire at the end of June of this year, and we wanted to give him some advance notice that it would, it would likely need to be renewed and that a bid process would probably, would probably be recommended so that we can get the best medical services available for our, for our dollar. In speaking with the Health Services Director, he indicated that he couldn't find a bid proposal or request for proposal from the previous administration, and in doing some research, I found that the previous or the current contract that's in place had requested, had undergone the process to request a waiver from the bidding process that was granted by the Board of Supervisors in 2019. The justification to waive the bidding process during that presentation was due to the unique nature of goods or services that were received by way of this contract. I would, I would disagree with that assessment. I don't, I would propose that the services aren't unique. This is nothing to do with the current Health Services Director. But I was able, with a quick search and just based on my knowledge of the services performed by various companies, I was able to come up with a list of eight similar companies that provide the same services throughout the country and here within California, and certainly a good use of public taxpayer dollars is, is, is found when we go through this bidding process. On April 28th, after my meeting with the Health Services Director, I received an email from Director Portney informing them that he had reached out to WellPath. By this time, April had rolled around, and we were coming up close on the, the expiration of the contract, and I hadn't seen anything, any request for proposals put out, nothing on the board agenda to renew this contract, and of course, this contract is a very essential public service that needs to continue without interruption so that we can provide medical services to our staff or inmates housed at the jail. On April 28th, I received the email from Director Portney indicating that he'd reached out to WellPath representative for a six-month extension, and in that email, he also indicated that he did not intend to renew that contract, rather place it in a suitable controller's hands. That led to several discussions, both with members of my staff and Health Services Department and myself, about who the suitable controller might be if it's not to be the Health Services Director. Administration crafting of a request for proposal for a contract of this nature requiring specialized services is not something that anybody in my department has the skillset, the knowledge or the background to do, and not to mention the fact that the reason that we're contracting in the first place is because the Health Department requested that contract to be put in place in 1995. Additionally, adequate oversight for administration of this contract is necessary, and there is nobody in the sheriff's, sheriff's office that has any skill or ability or knowledge to determine what is adequate administration of medical services at the jail other than what's in compliance with Title 15, which is the bare minimum, and I don't, I don't think it's fair to have sheriff's office staff oversee that contract. Over the next period of time, I heard several comments from, from staff as well as from the Health Services Director directly, indicating that he had several reasons for not wanting to administer the contract. Some of those reasons included there not being enough return on the investment for the services that were provided by way of this contract, that he didn't get paid to do this, and that he wasn't legally required to administer the contract. I'd like to touch on a couple of those. I found those comments a little bit concerning. As far as the return on investment, this is a service that we provide. We're not in the business of profiting off of any services that we provide, particularly in the jail medical. It's, it's an obligation that we have. People that are incarcerated generally are there involuntarily, don't want to be there, and we have a legal obligation to provide those services. While it is highly burdensome amount of money to be spending, it's simply something that we're required to do. As, as far as being paid to do this, this is something that the Health Department asked for. Granted, not the current administration, but the Health Department asked for this back in 1995, and it's been the duty of the Health Services Director ever since that time continuously to, to administer the contract. As far as not being legally required to do this, he's correct that there is no legal requirement that the Health Services Department administer this contract, and I don't know that there's any legal requirement that contracting services be provided for anything, and we as public servants do lots of things that we're legally required to do and lots of things that we aren't legally required to do because it satisfies some obligations that the county overall has in carrying out its functions. Shortly after that, on May 23rd, I received another email from Director Portney indicating he had negotiated a six-month contract extension on the current contract, and that after six months, there would be no more funding in his budget to support that contract. I didn't see anything on the board agenda, and it left me wondering what, what, what authority this was being taken under, if there had been some decisions that were made that I wasn't aware of that, that would change drastically the method by which we provide these, these required medical services to our inmates. The county ordinance is fairly clear on who has authority and what to do. Of course, the board ultimately has authority on, on what to do. The county ordinance designates the, the position of the county purchasing agent, and it designates, which is the CIO, and it designates assistant purchasing agents as all department heads. The county ordinance is clear on what the duties of the county purchasing agents are, and one of those duties is to assign the assistant purchasing agent's responsibility to assist in the performance of various duties related to procuring, securing bids, and administering contracts and services for our county. I think the, the decision to no longer administer this is likely outside the authority of the Health Services Director and lies within the authority of the county purchasing agent or alternatively with a decision of this magnitude likely should be made at the Board of Supervisors level. The, this contract, as your board, I'm sure, is, is well aware from many discussions, the provision of medical, adequate medical health services that are in compliance with, compliance with the law, in compliance with certain case, court decisions that have come out over the years is one of great concern as far as liability goes with the county. This administration, this contract has additional impacts on other departments in addition to the sheriff's office, most notably behavioral health, because a lot of behavioral health services are included with the service of this contract. Ultimately, by function of the contract and by function of the law, the responsible physician for the medical facility has ultimate decisions on all those decisions, whether they're medical or behavioral health in nature, but certainly the, the contributions that the Behavioral Health Department makes are, are something to be considered as well when deciding who's going to administer this contract or whether or not there will actually be a contract in place at all. Again, these are decisions that, that likely need to be made at the board level. I informed the Health Services Director by way of email that these services aren't optional, the, that the county is the contracting entity, and it's overall, it's the county's obligation to provide those medical services in the best way possible. I had, I had heard from, from the Health Services Administration that there's other counties that do this different ways throughout the state. He's absolutely right. There are other counties that do this different ways, and I'll tell you that just because somebody else does it different doesn't mean that we're doing it wrong. There's models all the way from Siskiyou County who, who by way of the Health Services Agency up there has staff providing medical services at the jail, to departments that run it as ours, where it's either county administration or some other entity that administers the contract, and there's also other counties where the Health Services Department administers the contract. What I will tell you is that in doing a quick research of what, what it looks like in counties where the, the sheriff's office administers these contracts, it didn't take me long to find a 2015 grand jury report from the County of Santa Cruz in, in which the, the grand jury found exactly the type of issues that I'm talking about right here, that administration of this type of contract by the sheriff's office, it is, I will say, the grand jury investigation came after there was a, a series of, I believe, four or five in custody deaths that occurred within two years after the sheriff's office administering the contract that was provided by WellPath. And that's not to say that that was the reason those deaths incurred, but they certainly felt it necessary to mention that in their, their grand jury report. And what they found was that that sheriff's office in Santa Cruz County, which I'm sure is much more well-staffed and has probably a lot more resources than we do here in Lake County, lacked anybody in their, in their staff that had any expertise or necessary experience or knowledge to adequately oversee this contract and ensure that there was adequate provision of medical services. Under Lake County policy, Section 7, item, Section 1 of, Section 7, designates the responsible department head for contracts, and the reading of that county policy is that the head of a county department, agency, special district commission or committee which requests consulting or contract services which are subject to this policy is identified as the responsible department head. I would say, I would, I would propose to the board that based on the fact that in 1995 the Health Services Department requested this contract for medical services be provided, that, that that responsibility carried on through the years and continue to this day, and that if there's a decision to be made, that it's going to be somewhere else, that that decision not be made by an appointed department head, that it be made by the Board of Supervisors. What I'm here to ask for today is for the board to provide direction to county staff on a couple of things. The first question that we need to have answered is are we going to continue with a contract providing jail medical services? We can certainly go back to the way that we did before 1995 and have county employees provide such medical services. That's certainly allowable, and it would meet our obligations. My, my opinion on that is I think that's a, not the best idea, probably the worst idea out of all those, given the, the nature and the, the increase in requirements of medical services, not to mention the, the upcoming requirements that CalAim programs are going to take on jail medical services within the facility effective in January of next year, or that the board provide direction and identify which department is going to be responsible for administering this contract and, and carrying out all the tasks that go along with crafting a request for proposal, crafting a request for contract. Certainly, the sheriff's office will be glad to assist whichever department that may be, but in any event, this can't sit around for another six months and, and have us at the end of the year trying to figure out what we're going to do for jail medical services. So that is my request of the board today.
Are there any questions for Sheriff before I ask Director Portney? He has his hands up. Director Portney, I see you have your hand up. If you can unmute, I'd like to see if you would weigh in on this.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors, for having me. Thank you, Sheriff, for your input on the matter. If I could try to address some of those points, they're most likely will not be in order, but I'll give it a shot. So we have a contract here with WellPath, which was potentially formerly known as California Forensic Medical Group. This contract agreement is, it's been from July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2020. Per law, we are supposed to every three years go out to RFP for a new service provision regarding jail medical services. That three-year term is up to date, so it's about that time. So when I say that we're not going to renew our original contract is true. I can't renew the original contract because the original contract is void because we have to go out to RFP. So the sheriff is right there. I would like to look at a couple of points in this RFP. The sheriff is correct. The county is to ensure that said medical services are performed, rendered in a professional, competent, and efficient, in an efficient and satisfactory manner. That's where the sheriff gets the opportunity to twice annually request that the public health officer do an annual inspection. Going to another point, the California Forensic Medical Group, which is known as WellPath, agrees to update, maintain policies, procedures in partnership with the sheriff's department, manuals, whatnot, to ensure that everything regarding patient care for their inmates is, is up to par in their facility. Going to another point, that the reason why we contract a service like this is because an organization like WellPath hires and maintains a medical director, a director of psychiatry, and they're responsible to ensure the quality and healthcare provision within the county jail facility and provide clinical supervision to mid-level practitioners and the staff who are providing services within the jail. Now, you may be curious, what kind of services do they provide? We contracted them because they provide full scope service, and what I mean by full scope service is medical health, behavioral health, and other services. And when you look at other services, you know, it touches on aspects of social services, et cetera, but the medical health and behavioral health far exceed any ability that we have as a county to be able to provide this service. So in short, I would say that this contract and this service is vital, and I appreciate the taxpayer and the Board of Supervisors for letting the Health Department and the county at large pursue this opportunity for our inmates. Now, getting back to the point, I can't renew the contract because it's up for RFP, so we have to find, establish a new contract with a different agency or establish a new contract with our current agency. Now, when it comes to renewal of our current contract, that's impossible because it's, it's going to be void here at the end of June 30th. We did get a six-month extension, but that's only going to go to six months, and after the six months, again, we're going to have to go to RFP. So when I say that we're not going to renew the contract, that's, that's true. We're not going to renew the original contract because we have to establish a new one. We did get an extension with a 5.19% increase due to the 8% inflation that we're experiencing right now, and that's going to help cover any additional costs. And to my last point, the Health Department is stuck in a precarious situation here because when it comes to wraparound services involving the sheriff's department, and there's expectations in here that the sheriff's department are supposed to be held accountable to along with behavioral health and social services, whatever, different departments. So this contract and, and the, and the Health Services Department holding it forces us to hold our peers accountable to work being done inside the jail, both on potential entry and exit. As peers to these agencies, it puts us in an interesting situation to hold a certain accountability that I feel is outside of our, our wheelhouse, and I think it takes a higher authority to be able to hold accountable goals, objectives, outcomes to reduce rabidism on our jails, to make our, to make our county a little bit healthier and safer. That's my feedback regarding those points, and if there's any clarification needed, I'd be happy. Oh, actually, the last thing is, considering this is, we are a self-funded department, Health Services, and taking into account the inflated rate that WellPath is needing to continue service, I can't negotiate a new contract with taxpayer dollar, right? So I am, I'm unable to negotiate a new contract at an inflated rate because I'm a self-funded department and I don't have a grant or funding to, to cover those inflated costs, so that would need to come to the board for consideration. I think that's my final point. Thank you.
All right. There any other questions from, for either? Oh, Stephen, yes. Stephen, I see you on. If you can give us some insight on this as well?
Well, I'm here more for questions than anything else. But the funding for this is currently for 22, 23, 80% general fund, a little over 2.4 million.
Stephen? Oh, no, go ahead. Go ahead. Sorry.
And behavioral health does put in some of their realignment to the tune of about 254,200. Public health used to put in some of their realignment of 404,000, and then also realignment 2011 from CCP would put in about 450. So the bulk of this is general fund. Other than that, I'm more question and answer at this point.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. We're going to entertain a break real quick. Supervisor Spatia would like to see if you could take a break.
Please.
So if we could take a five-minute break briefly, and we'll come back to this once we're finished. We're back. All right. So welcome back from the break, and so we were just finishing up with a statement by Stephen. It looks like, I'll have Todd Metcalf, Director Metcalf, he has his hand up, and once he's finished, I'll come to you.
Thank you.
Director Metcalf?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I just want to thank Sheriff Martin and, and Director Portney for their input here, and I just, I just want to say this contract is vitally important. It was mentioned that there is a behavioral health component to it, and my, and I do contribute to this contract, as Stephen Carter mentioned, a little. to this contract, as Stephen Carter mentioned, a little over $250,000 a year. If this contract were to go away, I don't have the staff capacity to fill in for the behavioral health part of it. And so I'm here to support this however, however my department can, though, you know, we don't have a lot of money either. But I just, I want to support this. We need this, this, this contract, whether it's with Wellpath or whomever. But these services are vital to folks in the jail, and I'm just here to support it however, however I can. And I appreciate Director Portney at least getting an extension to this contract. That's great. But, and maybe that'll give us some time to figure out where we go from here. It sounds like this, well, considering the item that was just heard, yes, I'm very familiar about the RFP process and learning it myself. But I don't believe any, the departments that are involved in this, none of us have the capacity to take this on on our own. And I'm behavioral health. I don't, I don't do medical stuff, so I don't think my department could handle it. But if that's where it needs to land, okay. But I don't, I, and I know Sheriff Martin is referencing a very old, how far back was that? 1995. And, but it does, it still seems to me that the health services department might be the best place for this to land, and I will support all of it as best I can because I, I can't, my department can't take on the behavioral health piece of it. I mean, we're doing some already, but I'll stop there. But thank you for that. This is a great conversation. But it's, this is pretty heavy, and we need to figure out where this is going. So again, thank you, Sheriff Martin and Director Portney for entertaining this discussion.
Thank you, Director Metcalf. Supervisor Spatia, do you?
Yeah, I have a few questions and then wanted to make an offer and a comment.
Should I let Crystal and Jonathan speak before, or did you want to?
I'd like to speak right now if possible. Mr. Portney, I just have a, Director Portney, I just have a quick question for you. You said there's an extension. Is that a six-month extension? Is that what I heard correctly, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I appreciate that. And has there been any initiation of an RFP, or this discussion is what helps us figure out where the RFP is supposed to originate from and what exactly we're asking for?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I think we have, we have six months right now.
Yes, clarification, yes, sir, to which question?
To the fact that we're waiting to make a decision on where the RFP comes from as far as which department and who's going to take the key role of leading that RFP process.
So there hasn't been an RFP started yet?
So, yes, that seems to be the case.
And this is, so I'd like to add comment on that. So in part of this RFP process, the collaboration with behavioral health, and I don't want to throw social services in there because I'm pretty sure through the CalAim, they're going to have some part with exiting inmates for linkage as a service to reduce revitism. So what I want to express is, in the contract that we currently have, care, coordination, and collaboration must be included in the sharing of information between providers essential to the vision of appropriate services and care. So what I would ideally like to see is one contract holder, but then MOUs between partnering agencies to identify what the scope of work is between agencies so it's actually trackable. And we have, we're able to actually identify what resources we have within our individual departments and then be able to track our success in providing care both in and out of jail. Right now, we, we don't have that. So we don't know how we're contributing to the, to the health of our inmate population or contributing to the lack of revitism of our inmate population. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you for that. And so jail medical is absolutely necessary. It's, it's a mandate. Basically, we have to provide the service. I think I can speak that we all can agree that the state of California doesn't exactly provide us with the resources necessary to be able to maintain the service need for the inmate population we have. We used to be a county jail of no more than one year. Now we're holding people for almost close to a decade. That is a whole different ballgame of what kind of medical requirements that is on a county. And all those changes that have happened in the state has just increased the R resources that are needed to make that possible. So I think that, that's one of the reasons we keep seeing the increases and so on. I think this is a complex topic, especially I appreciate Director Portney bringing up CalAim. That does create some potential changes. And I don't know that there's enough information today for us to say, this is where it belongs, this is where it doesn't belong. What is necessary is that we have the contract and that we continue to provide those resources to our inmates. And what I would like to offer is we had an ad hoc committee that was directly working with Director Portney. I would like to see if maybe that same committee can meet with the stakeholders and figure out what options can come back here because right now it's kind of like everything's on the table. And I'd like to have A, B, or C, or A, B, or just A if there's only one direction to go. But I just feel that we need to have a more intimate conversation on how to come back with options for the board to review rather than what we have in front of us today. And so I believe that that committee was put together with Supervisor Pyska and Supervisor Scott. Not sure if those two are interested in that, but that would be the direction I would like to move forward so that we can come back with options rather than the grand open book of things that are happening.
I would love to serve on this committee, but I think it'd be best to pull another supervisor since I'm only going to be here for the next month and a half.
And I didn't want to be rude and suddenly do that to you.
Supervisor Pyska.
So as mentioned earlier, I do have some requirements, and my requirement is to ensure the provision of, of medical services within the facility. I don't think there's a whole plethora of options that are out there. I think the question that's before the board today is do we continue with the contract or not? And if so, which department head is responsible for administering that contract? And that's all, all the guidance that I wanted. With the six-month contract, that only leaves us at six and a half months. It's going to take quite a bit of time. I think an ad hoc committee might be appropriate to help whichever department head is tasked with crafting the RFP. I think that's perfectly appropriate. I think that would be very valuable. But as far as a decision today, this is, this isn't something that we should start off by kicking the can down the road. I think the decision needs to be made today on whether or not we're going to contract, or if we're going to go back to the model that we had prior to 1995, or if we're going to continue to contract, which I would recommend that we continue to contract for many of the reasons that the, that Director Portney stated as far as the services that are required exceeding the capacity of county staff. And simply designate today which department head's going to be responsible for administering this contract. And I think I've made it clear in my position that I don't think it's appropriate for the sheriff's office to administer the contract.
So just to, if I could interject, would you, to answer those points, I totally agree. Continuing a contract is going to be essential for jail medical services, keeping in mind that we do have to go to RFP for this service. So there's no doubt that contracting for this service is going to be beneficial and essential for all. So that answers point one. I think to point two, I would not mind having this be under the health services department as contract oversight, but I do need the autonomy and authority to be able to manage the contract accordingly. That would require MOUs between stakeholders to hold accountability to the work being done. So I think that, to me, that, that answers both of those questions, is we have the opportunity to either continue if they win the RFP process, Wellpath, or get a different service provider. But at the end of the day, there needs to be accountability for the services being done and appropriate tracking of those. What I do know is in my individual budget, because I'm a self-funded department, I do not have the ability to pay out of pocket for these services. This is going to require a full-time staff member to manage this between partnering agencies through an MOU process, and I'm willing to take on that task. But it needs to be outlined clearly what the scope of work is and what the deliverables are between each agency.
And so I'm going to go ahead and open it up to Crystal. She's had her hand up quite, for quite some time. And then Steven, I'll go to you. And then back to you.
Good afternoon, Board. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, to outline what I think the Department of Social Services responsibility is in this, and we do have one, and that is determining eligibility for Medicao upon release. And that will continue in CalAim, but that is where, it is limited to that. And we'll continue doing that. I think that, you know, we, we're going to continue to partner with our county partners regardless of whether there is an MOU or not. That's how we work in this county, and you can expect that from social services and the board.
All right. Thank you. Steven?
I just wanted to, as quasi purchasing agent, I just wanted to ask, I don't recall seeing the extension being on the board's agenda at any point. That's way past signature authority.
The extension you said is past signature authority?
The extension, I believe, is in the, in the hands of the city council to be signed.
Or county council.
County council.
County council. Sorry about that, yeah.
So it's in the works, and then to the board?
Correct.
Ms. Grant?
Yeah, the extension agreement was sent to me just last weekend. I signed off on it yesterday, although the language was interesting. And, but I signed off on it because it had legal merits, so it should be going back right away. So I would, if you don't mind, just remind everyone that the contract with CFMG, now Wellpath, is with the County of Lake. So the administration of the contract and what that means to your board is something that your board would, would be considering. And I don't know that you have to be so top-heavy as to have MOUs between health services and these individual entities. What you may want to do is just clarify your board's expectations of all the individual departments that are involved in the contract and who's going to be doing what. But that's just a suggestion.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, so it sounds like the extension's coming to us soon, and we have the six months. And, you know, bringing back the ad hoc committee and working through what the, with the scope and the expectations and the functions are going to be for the new contract. I don't think we have, and the funding, yeah, all of these moving parts. I think, you know, it's, we'll only end up better if we do this work together now.
And so will the extension coming back, like, how soon is that? Probably in a week or two? Are you looking for something today?
I was hoping to come out of here with something today. Like I said, this is a, the RFP that's going to have to go out, it's probably going to, it's probably going to take several months to go over and we get all these stakeholders together. I'm not opposed to these, these ad hoc committees, but there needs to be an entity that's designated the responsibility for getting this going and, and ultimately to be responsible for the oversight of it. And as I said earlier, I value the oversight. I know there's a lot of talk about, you know, sheriffs don't want oversight, but I have no idea what goes into quality medical care. I know if, I don't like something my doctor does, but maybe that's the best thing for me to be done medically. I think it takes somebody or a department that's got the background and the knowledge to know what, what quality care looks like and to oversee that type of contract and make sure that the services are being provided under the contract are being overseen by somebody with the appropriate qualifications and skills. And again, I think time is of the essence. I would like to not see this get kicked down the road. It's the process for crafting an RFP, going out to bid process. This is a, a large contract that's going to require a consultant selection panel to be put together and to review this, and then to work out any logistics should some other company win the bid. I have no idea. This, I'm not here to, to support or oppose Wellpath one way or the other. This isn't the discussion for that. But the reality of it is Wellpath could continue to provide services, or it could be some other entity that can provide services. Regardless of who it is, there's a lot that needs to be done between now and the expiration of the contract that probably shouldn't wait any longer.
Excuse me?
Yes, Ms. Grant, go ahead.
The only thing I would say is that since I've looked at the amendment, I can send a copy directly down to your board. It can be on for next week's agenda. And I believe that the CAO is prepared to move forward with an RFP, and that can also be explained to your board on next week's agenda. So it will move forward with alacrity.
Yes, we've already been working with health services on the RFP. We still need to meet with stakeholders and make sure the scope is as broad and unique as it, or discreet as it needs to be. But we will be providing that assistance as needed to move this forward.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you, Ms. Grant. And so I, how does, uh?
Absolutely. It seems like, you know, we're moving in the way we need to. So we got the extension coming. We're going to set up the ad hoc committee, and we'll get an RFP out.
I think we're on the same page there. Supervisor Spatia?
I'm offering to be on the committee if that is something the rest of the board approves of.
Yeah, I think we'll bring it back next week and, because we, we didn't talk about the ad hoc on the.
You're right.
So we'll add that to that component.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah. The, we'll add the ad hoc component to that item. And that way, he can fill the Supervisor Scott seats and she's.
Or anyone else. Sharing my interest.
All right. And we can discuss that that day. So I think that's, that's where we'll be moving forward on that. I don't know if I have to open it up to public because I did not open it up to public.
I'm unclear. Is it in the, the board's inclination that county admin administer the contract?
No, what's happening is the next, next week, we'll come back with, with that, to move forward with that.
Okay.
Sir, I believe this is just to facilitate the RFP process to move it forward quickly.
So if I can recap?
Yes.
There will be a contract brought to us next week for an extension. That contract, just like it is now, will be a contract with the County of Lake with scopes of services as to what is expected to be done within the contract. There's a scope of service in every contract.
Nothing will be changed because the amendment is only as determined.
But there's a scope of service that already exists.
Exactly.
That will be amended for timeline, but not amended for changes for scope of service. Also, there will be a conversation about the RFP process where we are, as well as the new composition for the committee to meet. That way, we do not kick the can down the road. We are proactively, now that this has been brought to us, moving to get that resolved and understanding what are the stakeholders' roles, where is the funding coming from, and all of the other stuff that we've discussed. That way, we can make sure that as we create a new contract with post-RFP, that it's exactly the kind of contract that is going to benefit all of us. Just wanted to recap. Is that correct?
That's what I thought, but I, I think you're asking who obtains responsibility? Is, are you still like that?
Which department head's going to be tasked with the oversight of the administration of the contract?
I would suggest that at this moment in time, if we're extending it at this six-month process, that it continues as it has where public health services and remains in the same role they were. The sheriff department, the jail staff remain in the same role that they were. Wellpath in the same role that they were.
For the extension of the contract?
Yes.
Are we making a decision today on going forward, or is that going to come at a later time?
I think the RFP process will be crafted with the way moving forward.
Jonathan, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you, Supervisors. You know, just to maybe even contribute to any, limiting any further confusion, I don't necessarily mind managing the contract, but what I do need support in is clarity and accountability for the contract and the ability to have the proper authority to execute the contract accordingly. When it comes to rules, expectations of this contract, to be quite frank, they're not being fully met. And so when I do ask questions, comments, or need information from partnering agencies, either internal or external, I get that with full support from the board and partnering agencies. That would be my request. And I'd be more. And I'd be more than happy and willing to serve our partnering agencies and our inmate population and contributing to their health. But I need the ability to do my job in managing the contract. Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
I just think that our request can be accommodated with the ad hoc committee, the RFP. I think we're going to get clarification on everything. I completely agree with you. You know, we got the six-month extension, this Board has not changed anything, it'll go forward as is, and then we'll have the deeper conversation when the RFP comes through and we have our next agenda item. That's, that's what I'm leaving with today.
I will open up the public. Don't see anybody in the chambers, anybody online that's in attendance that would like to have a comment on item 7.6. All right. With that, I'll bring it back to the Board, and it looks like we have direction for next week.
Yep.
And we'll make sure that that's taken care of next week. Thank you, Sheriff Martin. Thank you, Jonathan Portney. Thank you, Todd Metcalf, and thank you, Crystal Markatan. And Stephen, thank you, Stephen.
Take care, Stephen.
All right. Go to the agenda and see what I got, because I think we did cover everything except for calendars.
Yep.
So with that, we will start with, who's ready?
I'm ready.
Vice Chair Scott?
Yes, my calendar. First, I'd like to report out, a couple weeks ago, I went to the needle exchange because we had so much public comment, concerns about what's going on down there, so I wanted to see for myself the dangerous situation that the children are in at the needle exchange. I'll have to say, I was there for probably a good two hours. I did not see any children whatsoever on the street. The, I talked to the people running the service, I found that there was a lot of good information being handed out while I was there. There was two people that approached the needle exchange looking for services. They, they actually were not looking for needle exchange services, they were looking for food and resources. One was actually looking for food for their, their dog that they had and water. I did find some really good information that they have. I know that there was a concern about children finding syringes up and down the street. I'll have to say, that's, that's not probably unique for that area. We see this all over California. There's needles out there. So there was some great information that I was given, I know you can't see this, but it's sir, syringe, and it's all done in kids' language, understanding and teaching the children that when you find a syringe, you know, not to pick it up, that it's dangerous. And that, you know, some syringes are good, and they go into, you know, when you go to the doctor or to the dentist. So there's some great information for our youth they're handing out also. So it's not just about exchanging needles. There's, there's a lot of information, resources, they were handing out clothing and food, and just having the camaraderie of talking to somebody, building that relationship, is what I found. And actually, what I found that was the most dangerous on that street was the cars driving way too fast. I wouldn't want my children playing on that street because of those cars, not for anything else that was going on down there. So that's my report out for that. Tomorrow, I will be headed to Sacramento to receive Hope Rising's, we are nonprofit of the year for our Assemblywoman, so we'll be, I'll be going down with our Vice Chair to accept that award. And then I'm hoping to be back by 5:30 to do the Blue Zones Walk, the meetup behind the Clear Lake Club at 5:30 on Wednesdays in Lakeport, and we walk for like 30 minutes and, you know, get to know each other and find new people, and it was a lot of fun. I did it last week, too. And then Thursday, I'm going to be meeting with, actually, it's a woman and has a new baby that was put into the housing new units here in Lakeport. She's actually from the Nest Project, and she's moving into a new home, and Seroptimus supported her with getting furniture and funding. So I'm going down just to see her and congratulate her on all the hard work that she has done to get to that place. And then, on, my Friday's pretty open. On Thursday, I will be doing Hike for Hospice in the morning with my family, and then hoping to hit the Lions Club, they're opening their new park, or they're, they're having their ribbon cutting at the new park here in Lakeport.
You can't skip over the hot dog theme?
Yeah, Hike for Hospice, my family and I will be dressed up as hamburgers and hotdogs and condiments, and then we'll be going hiking through Highland Springs, so it'll be quite entertaining.
Take pictures, the wildlife will be out.
Quite entertaining. And then Monday, just getting ready for Tuesday's meeting.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
To finish up today's meeting, we have football this afternoon, probably not going to make that, but the rest of the week I have that. Tomorrow morning, I have anything on Wednesday morning at this point. I've got the Southfield Committee on Thursday. In the evening, I have the math. I do have the Planning Committee meeting on Friday, but I do want to report out, I attended Congressman Thompson's second wildfire roundtable with quite a few representatives from Congress, obviously. State agencies were BLM, US Forest Service, Cal Fire, to really just continue to talk through the conversations about where we're going over the next decade, and that's the way we need to look at this thing. It's going to be quite a while as we're doing it, whether it's fire suppression, whether it's vegetation abatement, you know, cultural burns, back burns, you know, a lot of different conversations on how we're doing that. I know that there's a lot of funds coming through the agencies, but talking about also, how do we get those funds on the ground, implementation to do work, not only for our county or nonprofit agencies, but how do we also get it to, into the county to our private landowners when they're looking at other opportunities as we move forward? So, just going to continue those conversations as we move forward. Program we are running here in Lake County, obviously, the pilot program for the home hardening was a specific conversation. I know that is a pilot program, and it'll be rolled out over the next three years, and then, you know, hopefully the successful program that works here will be all county-wide here in Lake County, but also throughout the state. So a lot of conversation on that, and looking at what we're doing, staffing needs, general conversation all the way across the board, whether it's Cal Fire, US Forest Service, is getting those things staffed and be ready, and really look at changing that conversation. We all get caught up into that fire season, but it's, there's no longer fire season. It's all year-round, climate change affecting us, and we really need to look at it as, what season are they working in? Are they looking at vegetation abatement and removal, and then fire suppression during the fire season? So, continuing those conversations and really talking about what we're doing here in Lake County with the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority and all the government agencies at the table, looking at our best fit grants, so we're not competing with each other, or just helping each other bring as much funds into the county as possible. So, we'll continue those conversations, and they're hearing us, they're hearing us. Supervisor Price, she talked about it a couple weeks ago, the meeting she went to in Santa Rosa, what was the name?
That was the wildfire tree, Forest Resilience Task.
And so, Cal Fire, our state Cal Fire, Joe Tyler, was talking about, hey, we're looking at the tree mortality in Lake County, all the other issues, so, you know, we're doing a good job, we just need to keep working, you know, and as we're communicating, today, we worked through another grant, obviously, for the Ingress Egress for the Riviera, kind of a pilot program there, but we know these things will hopefully grow into just county-wide programs as we're looking for funding, so excited about that. But it is, you know, as you guys all know, bureaucratic, it's talking through things. We want to see it. Also, let them know, we're not waiting for them. We're going to ask, but we're going to continue to try and do things community-based and work with both the cities, counties, tribal governments, to just make an impact here locally, and we'll continue to do that. But we appreciate any of the funding that can be specifically brought into the county. So, I was happy to be on that call, and we'll continue those conversations. Give me a second here. Calendar close. And then obviously Thursday night, I have the math meeting. Math meeting's got a pretty good-sized agenda. I know our new Ag Commissioner is going to be down there, talking about some, some new fans that are up, that are, have been brought up in our area. We've got new winery, so frost protection, something, you know, that's, that's on the agenda. We have some project updates, I'll be, I'll be giving an update, and, you know, obviously taking questions also. It's a hybrid meeting, so we'll continue to do that. On, like I said, Friday, we have the weekly planning meeting. Saturday, I don't have anything, Saturday or Sunday, obviously, just family time. And then back here on Monday, I would like to ask CAO Parker, can we, are we going to do 9:00 AM on Friday? Or do, I know we have it on Monday, because we skipped that meeting. Is there availability on Friday?
I will make myself available on Friday.
If we could do 9:00 AM, if we could get to that Friday calendar, it'd be great. I know that week threw us off, but greatly appreciate it. And then obviously, in the afternoon, the CMAT Reporting Committee, and then the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority meeting at 3:00 PM on the 13th, and then back here on the 14th on Flag Day for the Board of Supervisors. I just saw it on my calendar, Flag Day, so.
All right. Supervisor Price?
Yeah, I have a couple things to report. Last week, we had the OES, or Cal OES Officer come up and kind of walk us through the process of how we have to get that started. It's pretty daunting, but we're just going to keep putting one foot in front of the other. We are waiting for a couple more key pieces of information to come through, and then we're going to be building our package with our asks so that we can get started on those projects, because we're starting from a place where we don't have the capacity or the funding to, to move into what we have to do. So, it's about to get really busy with us. We're waiting for that Cal Fire report from our flyover, we're waiting for a couple other things, and, and then we'll be getting really busy with that. I had a meeting last week with what is going to be the Conocti Fire Safe Council, it's the four HOAs in the Riviera's have formed Fire Safe Council, and they are actually moving forward with forming a 501(c)(3) also. So this is huge news, because this is the work that we've been trying to get our Lake County Fire Safe Council to do, and these four HOAs are very strong. They have a deep bench of experience, and they've been through the process, and, and they said it actually wasn't that bad. And we've been hearing a lot of stories about how hard it is to do this work, and it's not, and they have agreed to, to really help us build that template for the county-wide Fire Safe Council. So, I want to give huge props to, to those HOAs and the work that they do, because they have really come a long way. We have an amazing collaboration together with not just the Zona Benefit and the code enforcement work that's happening, but this new evacuation grant that, that they helped write, and then, and then submitted to Public Works, and then Public Works submitted it to the Fire Safe Council. So, just having the collaboration grow, this is an example of the work that we're able to do together. So that's really exciting. At the end of the month, the 23rd and 24th, we're taking our next steps to, to continue the, the collaboration that we built with the Risk Reduction Authority, and we're having all the stakeholders on a two-day workshop so that we can start aligning ourselves in the work that needs to happen so that we can build that Lake County Fire Safe Council. So, there's been a lot of outreach to all of our partners, if any of you, I don't know if you've heard about it, or if people are asking you about it, but Supervisor Simon and I will be at the Lucerne Castle those two days. That is a workshop provided by the Fire Adapted Network, Community Network, which is all pro bono work to help us on our mission, so. Amazing things are continuing to happen, and that's building on the CMAT work that we did last May. Oh, right, and Memorial Day weekend was opening weekend for all of the Cobb resorts and resorts around the county, so it's really great to be welcoming in the tourists for the weekend, even though it's a little on the chilly side, it was still great, there were a lot of people at the pools, a lot of people out and about, so it's summertime now. Okay, so tonight, I don't think I'm going to make it, but there is a, a weekly farmer's market in Cobb, which is so sweet and amazing, with lots of vendors, and it's really busy. It's at Pine Grove Resort from 4:00 to 7:00. So, hopefully my family's there right now, or about to go there and take advantage of everything that's there, because there's a lot of great things. Tomorrow, I've got an appointment in the morning and a lot of catching up to do. Thursday, Fire Safe Council meeting. And then Thursday night, I will be at Kelseyville High School for their senior awards, giving out the K-Cor awards for those kids that have been working for two years for K-Cor. Okay, K-Cor. Friday morning, I have the home hardening meeting. Saturday and Sunday are the two drop, community drop-off days for trees and slash and other vegetation. Community members can be cleaning up their yards and deliver it to the Air Curtain Burner, which is, now has a new location at Adam Springs. It's $25 for a pickup truck load and $50 for a trailer, and so you can drop off between 10:00 and 3:00, and then once a big enough pile is accumulated, then we're going to fire up the burner and start getting rid of all that debris. So that's been a, another really big collaboration. I want to give a big thanks to the Carrberry Council's Forest Stewardship Committee, working with Southlake Fire, with the Cal Fire donation of the curtain burner. So, a lot of partners, again, wonderful community collaboration to address this need. It's a, you know, it's kind of a pilot project. We're going to look at this as a template where we can replicate it other places where there's a need to get rid of the vegetation. That's Saturday and Sunday. And then Monday, I have a meeting with CAO Parker, our CMAT Reporting Meeting, and Risk Reduction Authority, and then back on Tuesday, which is Flag Day.
All right. Supervisor Scotty?
Are we all supposed to finish with that?
Yeah, it was on there, Flag Day.
Thank you. So, last Wednesday, got an invitation from the Sheriff to be a part of a conversation about CalAim. CalAim is a new program from Medicaid that the state of California is rolling out that is more of a whole-person scenario, so appreciate the invitation. Conversations I've already started to have over with CSAC, so taking that information and bringing it to that meeting, looking forward to the upcoming meetings for that. Got to have the privilege to take a flight out of Lamson Field and land at a Sacramento airport, the Cal Fire Airport to be exact, and with Director Ewing and Lakeport representatives and Clear Lake representatives, got to tour a whole lot of aquatic centers and rec centers to kind of take a look at what is already in existence, how much did it cost, what's the maintenance, what's the self-sustainability of these projects, so that we can come back to the drawing boards here for what it is that we're looking to create here in Lake County. I thought that you were made aware of that, Supervisor Scott, that I was invited to that, and I'm sorry that it was a surprise at the last Tuesday meeting that I, that was the first time you heard that, when I mentioned I was going. But there was a lot of awesome stuff out there to see, and I sure hope that we can just pick one up and drop it right here in Lake County, because it's not, it was filled with everything but youth. We know that our youth are going to utilize those places, but because of the timeframe that we were going on, on a Wednesday morning afternoon, it was jam-packed with elderly adults, adults, it was just, it's what we need for everybody here. So I'm looking forward to continuing those conversations, and thank you for starting them. Then, next, the following week, I went to the Far North Transit Symposium. Our APC team of Davey Bates and Associates were the, taking the lead in creating that symposium. The amount of information that I learned about hydrogen systems and the infrastructure needed, and the comparison from hydrogen to electric was amazing, inspiring, and absolutely makes me see a different vision of what we need to be working on for the future here in Lake County, especially when it comes to public transit. So I appreciated the fact that they held that over in Ukiah. I did miss out on the beers and axe-throwing, which next year I'll have to... next year I'll have to make sure to take advantage of that. Sounds like fun. But that's just a quick recap of some of the things that I did last week. This week, tomorrow, I have a meeting with the Audit Committee. If I have that chance, I'll also be able to meet with CC4C. Looks like we have a roadmap task force meeting, yep, starting at 1:00 tomorrow. I'm hoping to make it to our first five meeting that's happening as well. Is that correct? That it's on the 8th?
No, first five isn't till the 22nd.
So I still have the old version of when they meet?
And the Audit Committee meeting, if it's the same meeting I go to, that's not?
I thought it was on the 8th. We'll figure it out.
No, I think they moved it. I think it's been moved.
Okay. I'll have to just review my emails. I apologize for that. Pretty wide open on Thursday and Friday. Just have a lot of work to catch up on. I hopefully have a presentation I'll be giving to you guys on the 14th. And I am coming to Lakeport on the 11th on Saturday. I believe it's in Library Park. The Symphony is, the Lake County Symphony is doing a event. And they asked me to talk at that event. And I know that my son went through violin lessons that was brought to you by Susan Conde, who was part of the Lake County Symphony. And those were all funds that came from there. Really appreciated the programs that they have to offer. And I think music and our youth are two things that need to continuously happen in our communities. Other than that, that's all that I have, other than meeting again here on Monday with our CAO. And then coming back for our Tuesday meeting.
Since you're coming to this side of the lake, you should put a costume on and join us for Hike for Hospice at 9:00.
Do you need relish? Oh, and Flag Day is on Monday.
It's Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday, sorry. It doesn't say it on my calendar.
All right. So I'll go back to the Clear Lake Blue Ribbon Committee we had a couple of weeks back, but it was, we didn't have a meeting in between. So I wasn't able to report out. Basically, we are going to be having another, I think it's like a special meeting here at the end of June to discuss the oxygenation project that Turk is proposing. And so a lot of the other projects seem to go through pretty, you know, without so much contention. However, that one needed some more questioning. So it'll come back at that date. I think it's at the end of June.
Ocrety?
What's that?
Is that Ocrety?
What's that?
The person who's offering, sorry.
Oh, no, no, Turk. Tahoe Research, yeah. They've done an oxygenation project before. And so they're looking to do that in the Keys area of the lake. So.
Awesome.
So then, of course, that same day, I attended the Chiefs meeting for the fire departments. They're looking to, and I'm not, you guys probably already knows this, but it was in the district. Chief asked me to go. Chief Siantio asked me to go. So I attended. And so I think it's going to be in Lakeport next time. I'm not sure. I think it's monthly. So it might be third or fourth week in, of the month, I think, or something like that. So I'm not sure. They have a temporary chief right now. So just letting you guys know that they, they're hoping that each supervisor in the district can go to the meeting while they're in that district because they rotate. So we'll see how that goes. Let's see. Ad hoc Advisory Committee on Wildfire. I know Supervisor Pieska had attended with us as well. And I think we came to a final conclusion of a lot of the policies that we're looking at. A lot of the other supervisors deal with a lot of similarities with you. And I think you enjoyed it to hear some of their comments because they were pretty, they were pretty on it. So we have a list that we're looking through and hoping, the idea is to give RCRC a better opportunity to represent us as a rural county. So a lot of the policies that we're opening up is looking at different things like insurance and tribal ecological knowledge and tree mortality and things of those natures, land acquisition, conservation easements. And the list goes on with a lot of different policies that they're looking at. And so the goal is that they can serve us as basically our, you know, our representation when they're at the state. So that's, that was that meeting. And I don't, I know you were there, so you enjoyed it. Let's see, my calendar, back to that. Last week, we had the Cannabis Ad hoc Committee with RCRC as well. Basically, talked with other counties that are dealing, Humboldt being one of them, Trinity, you know, a lot of the counties that share cannabis ordinances and whatnot. But then there's also some groups that were there that were not part of, that they're actually, you know, didn't have any cannabis and it wasn't, it wasn't allowed in their counties. However, they still deal with the illicit grows. So after discussing further and further, that was going to be our topic next, the next meeting that we have is illicit grows. They did go over some bills and whatnot. And I don't know where, I just had those, but I'll save that for another date. That they discussed that were in, that are still alive in the Senate or the Assembly right now that are going to help us with specific things coming forward. Let's see. Yesterday, we had the Middle Creek Restoration Meeting. We also met with Habemantol Pomo of Indians of Upper Lake with the Water Resources Department. And that was, it was pretty good, talking about some issues regarding, of course, Middle Creek and a couple of other things. And so we'll be looking for that Middle Creek Restoration Meeting in a couple of months. We're also very, they were also very excited about the opportunity for the funding from, you know, Congressman Thompson and Susan. Thank you for the work on that. They were ecstatic about that in the meeting. Tomorrow, Agenda Review, Roadmap Task Force, that's one. And then Lake County Tribal Health is doing Honor One, is to honor all for graduates. So they asked me to come and say a few words there. Thursday, South Deal, Law Library, Board of Trustees, and Laugh in the evening. That's where we'll actually also talk about, one of the topics that you brought up Supervisor Scott, was the needle exchange. That's going to be on the agenda for that night as well. So let's see. Friday, I have pretty open right now. We'll see how that goes. I'll probably fill it with other things to prepare for either the next week or for the next town hall the next week. That's what I usually try to use that day for. CAO meeting in the morning on Monday. And I don't think I have anything else on yet. I don't think I do. There was going to be a workshop, but I think that got pushed out for the Upper Lake Levy situation. Water Resources was working to have something like that, but it didn't go through. So, well, we'll be back here next week for the meeting.
And Audit Committee, 22nd at 10:00.
What is it?
Audit Committee, Supervisor Sabatia.
22nd?
22nd, 10:00. And then I won't be able to be at Agenda Review tomorrow. So don't wait for me.
All right. With that, I think that concludes our agenda. We go into closed session. Let's see. I don't know where. I'll just read it from this one. We have 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, Health Services Director, 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Public Health Officer, and 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 56.9, D1, project number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. With that, we'll go into closed session. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in today. And we will come out of closed session later on, after we're finished. So.